All right, Mr. President, the time is now nine oh one AM and you can call the meeting to order.
Good morning, staff, colleagues, members of the public. It's nine AM on June tenth, two thousand and twenty five, and we're calling this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's start with having the clerk of the board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, a live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the Interpretation Globe icon and select the Spanish language. If you're using a smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select Interpretation, then select the Spanish language, and then finally click Done. At this time, I would like my colleague Victor Hernandez to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good morning, President Canepa, Honorable Board Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez, all county staff and members of the public, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter with On Point. Muy buenos dias. Les queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes que se les proporcionará interpretación en vivo de toda esta reunión en español. Para poder acceder al servicio de interpretación en vivo por Zoom, ya sea con una computadora o una portátil, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono de un globo, es decir, un mundo terráqueo y seleccione su idioma, que sería el español. Si usted está utilizando un teléfono inteligente o una tableta, entonces usted tiene que buscar el menú de tres puntos, selección Interpretación, y luego selección el idioma en español, y por último tendrá usted que hacer clic en Done o Listo. Thank you very much.
Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for those instructions. Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge. We'll now move to, before we do that, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Thank you. Supervisor Spear?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo is joining online and is mentioned on the published agenda. Supervisor Corzo?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Gaché?
Here.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
I'm here.
Thank you all present.
All right. We'll now move to honoring the life of, and Board member remarks. Do any supervisors have any remarks? Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah. Kind of counsel Niblin, yesterday I believe there were some legal developments related to the sheriff. And for transparency's sake, if you could share that with the board and the public?
Thank you. I'd be happy to. As the Board, of course, knows, and most members of the public likely as well, last Thursday at a special board meeting, the Board of Supervisors initiated a removal process pursuant to Section four twelve point five of the San Mateo County Charter with respect to the county sheriff. On Friday afternoon, the sheriff attempted to file a lawsuit, a writ action seeking to enjoin or stop the removal process that the Board had initiated. The sheriff's papers were rejected, actually, by the clerk's office over at the court because she had failed to file them properly. So in any event, though, yesterday her attorneys went to court and asked the court to issue TRO, a Temporary Restraining Order, to stop or enjoin the removal process that had been initiated. I'd want to note that the rules of the court generally require approximately twenty-four hours, a little more than twenty-four hours of notice in order to go in ex parte, or not on a notice motion, to seek a temporary restraining order. And we actually only received about thirty-eight minutes of prior notice, which was disappointing. In any event, though, the sheriff's lawyers appeared in person before the judge, and owing to lack of notice, the county's lawyers, the Cacker Van Ness Law Firm, were required to appear via Zoom, just didn't have time to get to the courthouse. In any event, notwithstanding some of the deficiencies that I just cited, the court heard arguments from both sides, and the court denied the sheriff's request for a restraining order to stop the removal proceedings. So the removal proceedings remain on track. The Temporary Restraining Order was denied. And the court indicated, without actually touching on the merits per se, that it would be premature to rule on the matters that the sheriff raises until after the entire administrative removal procedure is complete. So that's what I have to report. Subject to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you, President Canepa. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the many emails that I believe we've received regarding immigration legal services. I wanted to share that, as the daughter of Guatemalan immigrants and someone from a mixed-status family, I share our community's deep concern and outrage at the federal government's treatment of our immigrant community. I also want to acknowledge that Supervisor Mueller and I have both personally worked together with county staff over many months on the legal services contract to anticipate and prepare for the changing needs. And I want folks to understand that in the contract that will be on the agenda later, the county has proposed a five hundred and twenty-six increase in funding, five hundred and twenty-six percent increase in funding for rapid response and urgent legal needs, and a twenty-nine percent increase in affirmative legal services that includes support for pursuing legal pathways to citizenship. At the same time, it is true that there has not been an increase for funding for removal defense. And I want the community to know that I believe we are committed to our immigrant residents, and I support approving the consent agenda to not increase the risk of a gap in funding. And in addition, I'd like to request that our county executive and our county staff continue to work together with our partners to make sure our funding levels are in line with the needs in the community as they evolve quickly. And I also want to just take a moment to say that I'm not there in person today because my son is graduating from middle school. And so, you know, I wouldn't miss a meeting for, there are very few reasons, but this is one. It's a once-in-a-lifetime moment, so I can't miss it. But I'm sorry I'm not there with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments? Seeing none, thank you, members. We'll move to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to come on and comment on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, but that are not on the agenda for today's meeting. For matters that are listed on the consent agenda and for matters that are set for closed session, public comment will be limited to one minute. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have about eighteen speakers from chambers. There's three speaking on general comments, and then there's about fifteen speaking on item number fifty-one, which is consent. And members of the public, we do have a manzanita hall opened up for overflow. If you don't have a seat here, you're welcome to go to that room. And then if you wish to comment, you can come back to this room. So we'll start with Maria Aguirre, followed by Alan Moss.
Good morning. Good morning. I am here seeking some help. We just purchased a property in Moss Beach Seal Cove. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with Ray Mueller. And my being here is that the property is on Ocean Boulevard. Yes, I'm the one who bought the zoo. It's the one with the concrete pad. And there's many things that have occurred at this property, and we're trying to resolve it. I've gone to planning, I've gone to Public Works, and I'm getting no resolution with them. So I'm here seeking some assistance. There's drainage that has occurred for many, many years, causing a nine-foot gully right down our property, which consequently caused the house to crack in half. Also, water. We would love to have water. Even if we could never build on it, we bought it knowing that. We want to preserve it, and my husband's a landscape designer contractor, general contractor, and we would love to have water. So again, you have my information, any hope, and Ray, we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Thank you. Alan Moss, followed by Sid Young, and then Jim Lawrence.
Good morning, Supervisors. I come to speak about Seal Cove.
Speak into the mic, please.
I've come to speak about Seal Cove. I spoke at the last meeting. Up to that time, hardly anything had happened. Interestingly, the day after I spoke was the first time that the county had done anything to maintain the road in the neighborhood. Since that time, the county has done nothing. No one has been out there, no one has examined the road, nothing has been done. Maybe two weeks ago, flyers were passed out by the county to tell us to stay informed and go to a county center online. That updated us with four items. First, identifying homes that have been impacted. Second, monitoring damage to the local roadway network. Third, updating the geological study developed. Can I have ten more seconds? Thank you. So nothing has been done in the last thirty days that is at least as publicly known. What has been done by the county is to try and get a ninety-one-year-old woman in Seal Cove out of her house. Red-tagged, you pulled the meter, her gas meter. She has no heat, she has no hot water. She is a cancer victim. And there's a chance today that her electricity may be pulled. I don't know. It was represented to me the other day that that would be put on hold, but I haven't gotten any other word. So from my point of view of a resident of forty years in Seal Cove, the county's done everything they can to get a ninety-one-year-old woman out on the street with no place to go and has done nothing to do anything to maintain the neighborhood or inform the neighborhood at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Twenty-eight more speakers from chambers. Sid Young, followed by Jim Lawrence.
Sid Young, Seal Cove, thirty-seven-year resident, San Lucas Avenue, neighbor of Carol, neighbor of Alan. There's twenty streets in Seal Cove, over a hundred homes. I am speaking about the equity for Seal Cove neighbors. I live on San Lucas Avenue, like Alan. And we pay the same property taxes as the rest of the county, but when it comes to services, we seem to get the brush-off in the short shrift from the county departments. And I was just speaking with Mike. There is item one nineteen. I was going to ask to pull that item because I thought you guys were going to be doing a budget coming up in end of June, but I see they're funding all the roads today. So there's nothing for all of Moss Beach today on the budget for one nineteen. So he said we can fund it later because they're having a meeting tomorrow at Ray's office in the county. Anyway, I'd like just a few more minutes. I would just like to say that sometime in two thousand and twenty-three, the Public Works Department closed the, put up a barricade in Seal Cove at the end of our street. We only get one road in our whole twenty streets swept, whereas lots of other streets do get swept. And this is how it looks right now after there was a water leak. And right on the end of our street between Ocean Boulevard, this is a crackdown at Ocean Boulevard. So before the barricade was put up, it was nice. It looked nice. We are a visitor-serving neighborhood. Don Horstley got some money from our parks mitigation fee. He got that money out of the county. And it was for parks, but he took that money and paved two roads in Seal Cove after they closed Ocean Boulevard, three blocks of it.
Thank you very much, Sid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, the next comments are all on item number fifty-one. So we'll start with Jim Lawrence, followed by Tanish Danitz.
Good morning. I'm one of the members of the Board. Mr. Callagie, families first. I want to speak on behalf of our immigrant family population. As you know what's happening in the world, they're really afraid. And the concern they have now is that the budget allocation for services to support them does not meet the needs. So I humbly ask you to take a second look at that and stay attuned to it so that when need comes, we can support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lawrence.
Tanish Danitz, followed by Angie Miller.
Hello, my name is Trish Danitz. I've lived in Menlo Park for nineteen years. I raised two children here. San Mateo County has been very good to us. If you look up San Mateo County on the wealth index, it comes up as a number one. Trump's immigration policies are cruel, indiscriminate, and most likely illegal. But the courts cannot move fast enough to protect our community. Here is my radical proposal. I wonder if San Mateo could make it a goal to be the first county in the United States that could provide all immigrants with legal representation. The extra tax, to me, would probably not cause me great discomfort, but the consequences for the community could be tragic. Let's not let families be separated. Immigrants are an important part of our community. We need them. San Mateo County should be a leader in this, in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie Miller, followed by Deacon Lauren McCombs, and then Bill Knoll.
Good morning. I'm a thankful member of the Redwood City community. And for more than twenty years, our organization has served in North Fair Oaks and Redwood City, predominantly immigrant families. And I'm here this morning to just thank you for listening, thank you for your heart and your concern for our community. But indeed, these are some of the hardest-working families that we know. Every day I hear stories of beautiful families who are encountering fear and concern over what will happen with them in the future. Some of these families ask me if I will take their children should their families be deported. This is heart-wrenching. I know we, as a county, do many, many wonderful things. I would ask that you consider this funding for supporting our families. Many of our families have sought legal counsel, and that counsel robbed them of money. And so we have a great opportunity here to empower this community and support those who have been working so hard and quell some of the fear that exists today. Thank you so much.
Deacon Lauren McCombs, followed by Bill Knoll.
Good morning to all present. This microphone seems a little quiet, but I'll do my preaching voice. My name is Deacon Lauren Patton-McCombs. I'm currently serving at Christ Episcopal Church, Portola Valley and Woodside. I'm a member of Peninsula Solidarity Cohort and Faith in Action. I've lived in San Carlos for over thirty-five years, but I have never thought I would see, I'm witnessing what is going on in our nation, in our state, and in our communities. The treatment of our immigrant families is inhumane and brutal. The overwhelming fear of possible deportation is ever-present in the minds of parents and children. As the elected Board of Supervisors, you have been empowered to protect the health and safety of all of our families living in San Mateo County. There are an estimated fifty-five million immigrants. And I'm asking you to use your power and authority to increase the funding for deportation, legal representation for immigrant families in the areas of legal representation for deportation, representation, emergency activism, and legal pathways to citizenship. I implore you to legally protect the most vulnerable immigrant families by establishing more funding from one point two one million dollars to two point seven five. This is essential to protecting our immigrant families. Thank you for serving our county.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bill Knoll. He had submitted two comments, but you can only speak once under consent or general public comment, so please, you have one minute, followed by Ronald Owen Jr.
Good morning, County Board of Supervisors. As immigrant leaders in San Mateo County, many of us are more fearful and worried about what is happening to family members that are detained or deported by ICE. We know that there are not enough attorneys currently to support our community with preventing deportation, to fill out asylum applications, to support unaccompanied youth to apply for relief, and to help our neighbors with necessary paperwork to avoid deportation. We thank San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for their ongoing partnership and commitment to fund the rapid-response attorneys in the budget. With the level of need and the urgency of this crisis, as the second wealthiest county in the United States and as a county, as a community dedicated to welcoming our immigrants, we must do more. We must make a deeper investment, one that includes additional funding for prevention. It is unacceptable that the vast majority of San Mateo County residents are showing up in our immigrant court in San Francisco, having to represent themselves. Adding three more removal defense attorneys will mean that we have seven county-funded immigration attorneys focusing on deportation prevention in a county with fifty-five thousand undocumented residents, living with tremendous fear and insecurity, and bring us to less than only forty percent of the level of annual funding as much as our neighboring counties of Santa Clara and San Francisco are doing. Not only is this necessary and feasible, it's the moral thing we must do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Ronald Owen Jr., followed by Roger Mateo, and then Daniel Rosenblatt.
I rode more than a hundred and twenty miles today on a motorcycle to speak to you all. California Health and Safety Code one zero one zero two five states, "The Board of Supervisors should take measures to preserve and protect the public health." On April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Department of Health and Human Services Javier Becerra, Secretary of Health and Human Services, said, quote, "We know these vaccines are killing people of color, black, Latino, indigenous people at about two times the rate of white Americans." My name is Ronald Liff Owens, Jr. I was a public information officer at the California Department of Public Health. I shared this information to your Board of Supervisors last July and last December, as well as your fifty-seven other county boards of supervisors. It's your statutory responsibility, your statutory responsibility to promote and preserve the public health. I urge you to direct your county health officer to stop promoting, stop administering, and stop distributing the COVID- nineteen vaccines. They are killing people of all colors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Roger Mateo, followed by Daniel Rosenblatt, and then Stacy Howard.
Good morning. My name is Roger Mateo. I am a resident of Belmont and San Mateo County. I did my psychiatric residency at Chop Hospital. As retired psychiatrist, having served thirty-five years for San Mateo County and Santa Clara County, I would like to highlight the serious and long-term mental health effects that deportation has. The impact of deportation is acute, producing fear, confusion, panic, anger, withdrawal, poor focus, decreased productivity, hopelessness. The impact is also broad, affecting not only the victim, but also spouses, children, extended family, friends, neighborhoods, neighbors, and the community in general. Focusing on just the large number of people impacted by each deportation neglects another aspect of the tragedy, that the trauma is not just a point in time, not just today, but extends to years with chronic anxiety, depression, suicidal thoughts, and sometimes suicide. The push for deportation gets stronger every day, and increase in the number of attorneys for deportation defense from four to seven is the appropriate and needed response to the current threat that faces members of our community. I ask that you provide funding for additional rapid-response attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Rosenblatt, followed by Stacy Howard, and then Nancy Goodman.
Members of the Board, Mr. Callagie, I'm here today. My name is Daniel Rosenblatt. I live in San Carlos. I am a volunteer with Faith in Action, San Mateo County, and I recently attended Immigration Court. There were six families whose case was being judged that day. Not one single family was represented by an attorney. All of their cases got delayed for two months. I'm asking that the county increase the funding for attorneys by at least one million dollars to get it somewhere near where Santa Clara and San Francisco counties are. That would enable the hiring of three more attorneys to represent all of these people who badly need representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenblatt. Next speaker is Stacy Howard, followed by Nancy Goodman, and then Carol Cook.
Good morning, members of the Board. Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez. I'm Stacy Howard. I'm the Executive Director of Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. The Legal Aid Society acts as the lead agency for the immigration contracts that are before you on the, on the consent agenda today. I'd like to echo Supervisor Corzo's words in thanking county executive staff and Supervisors Corzo and Mueller for all the work to get those contracts together and get them on today's consent agenda. As Supervisor Corzo mentioned, they do represent a significant increase, particularly in the rapid-response funding, which is desperately needed right now. We support approving those items on the consent agenda, and we look forward to continuing to work with county staff and the supervisors to work towards meeting the incredible need for removal defense representation that is growing by the day. Thank you very much.
Nancy Goodman, followed by Carol Cook, and then Keith Miller.
Thank you, and hello, everybody. I'm Nancy Goodman. I live in Redwood City. I'm at the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Redwood City, as well as Faith in Action Bay Area and Fixons San Mateo County. Thank you so much for all of your support for the rapid response and the deportation defense and other attorneys. And I echo what Supervisor Corzo said. Thank you, Supervisors Corzo and Mueller, for working so hard on this. Please pass it, and then please continue to talk. And as Stacy said, find a million dollars in our wealthy county to fund three more deportation defense attorneys. We should be able to do that. We can't control or prevent the thugs in the federal government and what they're doing, but we can protect our own people. And it's much worse than any of us have lived through or any of us expected. And I know we're being asked to step up even more, but please find that million dollars, and thank you all for working so hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to notify the public, if you're speaking in Spanish, we do have translation and interpretation available here. So let me know in advance if you're seeking Spanish and English interpretation. Next speaker is Carol Cook, followed by Keith Miller.
Good morning. My name is Carol Cook. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of San Mateo County, living in the city of San Mateo. And I applaud the Board of Supervisors for funding rapid-response attorneys. I want to add my voice to those who are saying that a larger increase is needed due to the urgency and scale of the crisis that the immigrant community is experiencing, and also because this work has been historically underfunded in our county. Adding three more attorneys for removal defense will bring us to less than forty percent of the level that Santa Clara County and San Francisco County are funding. Removal defense is deportation prevention. We must do more than we did last year. I beg you to consider finding that million dollars and funding more defense attorneys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next is Keith Miller, followed by Salvadoro, I'm sorry, can't read the last name, Arrea.
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. Mr. Callagie, thank you for all that you do. My name is Keith Miller. Five years ago, I fell madly in love with a beautiful woman by the name of Angie Barra, and I married her, and I moved. I became an immigrant to California and to San Mateo County, and California and to San Mateo County, and my life has not been the same. I not only fell in love with Angie Barra and the work that she does and the heart that she has for the community, but also with San Mateo County and North Fair Oaks, to the extent that I left my for-profit job to go work with Generations United. I have a slightly different perspective than some of my colleagues here today. Thank you for considering the increase in funding. That's great. We, as a county, because we have been so largely resourced by God's grace, there's a higher call. We should be the vanguard for solutioning the immigration problems that our nation exists. We have resources. We have organizations like Stanford. We have wealth here. And so I'm actually calling us as a county to come up with the solutions. We know our system's been broken for 50 years or more. I think the solution should come out of San Mateo County, so I'm actually asking us to go higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Salvadoro Areya, followed by Trinidad Villa Gomez.
Sí, buenos días, señores.
One second, please. You can move the mic closer.
Through the president, I think she is going to actually use her own interpreter present here, but however, I'm going to be here just to monitor and just to make sure that things move with ease.
Sí, buenos días, señores supervisores. Represento a la organización Fe y Acción, una organización que ayuda a muchas familias latinas.
Good morning, supervisors. I am part of Faith in Action, and this is an organization that helps the community.
Nuestra petición es de suma importancia.
Our request is a very big, important thing.
Viendo que nuestras familias trabajadoras honradas, que llevan el pan a la mesa, están siendo deportadas.
Seeing that our working families, that work very hard and bring the bread to the table, are being deported.
Y no tienen los medios para pagar un representante por un abogado.
And they do not have the means to pay for an attorney to represent them.
Necesitamos su ayuda.
We need your help.
Económica.
Economic help.
Como nuestros representantes que son...
As your representatives that you are...
Esperamos que nuestra petición se haga realidad.
We hope their petition becomes a reality.
Para que no haya más niños separados de sus padres, ni más lágrimas en los hogares.
So that we don't have no more children separated from their parents and no more tears at home.
Queremos, con el corazón les pedimos, la ayuda a muchas familias que han sido deportadas. Son olas de familias que están dejando sus hogares.
And with our heart, and in our heart, we ask you for these families, that so many already have been deported and they have left their homes.
Represento a familias muy dolidas.
I represent homes that are, families that are hurting very much.
Queremos el apoyo de ustedes.
We want your support.
Fe y Acción se los pide con mucho amor.
Faith in Action is asking for this with lots of love.
Una organización que está trabajando muy duro en la comunidad.
This is an organization that's working very hard in the community.
Gracias, señores.
Thank you, sir, and ladies.
Thank you. Next speaker is Trinidad Villa Gomez, followed by Emilio Garibé.
Buenos días, señoras supervisores del Condado de San Mateo, nuestros representantes. Mi nombre es Trinidad Villa Gomez.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm a representative of the county of San Mateo. My name is Trinidad Villa Gomez.
Soy miembro de Fe en Acción.
I'm a member of Faith in Action.
La razón por la que hoy estoy aquí es para agradecer por el apoyo que han brindado a nuestras familias inmigrantes.
The reason I'm here today is to thank you, and I'm grateful for the help that you have given our immigrant families.
Pero también exhortarles y pedirles que como responderos desde la línea de la respuesta comunitaria, nos damos cuenta de la gran necesidad que ha aumentado ahora en estos momentos, que el apoyo que ahorita hay no es suficiente. Ha aumentado, si se puede decir, más del 500%, la necesidad en respuesta a los años anteriores.
And I thank you. As a member of Faith in Action, I'm also the person that answers the hotline, and I can tell you how this has increased almost 500% the need for help in immigration. I am grateful to you, and I'm asking, and I'm petitioning for you to help us more.
Por eso, exhortamos en nombre de la comunidad inmigrante que está sufriendo al escuchar esas llamadas por teléfono, esas voces desgarradoras pidiendo un representante legal para que asistan sus casos, para que no sean deportados, separados de las familias. Es triste. Es triste negar y decirles sí. Hay voluntarios que asisten a las cortes, voluntarios ciudadanos que han brindado su apoyo en este momento, pero ahora, ahora es el momento de actuar. Ahora es el momento de que ustedes, como nuestros representantes, asistan a su comunidad. Gracias.
She forgot she was supposed to stop every other phrase. But I do not take notes, but I'll summarize what she said. It is very difficult for me, for us, that we answer the hotline, that we hear the cries for help from the community, that they need a representative. We know that there's many volunteers that go with them to courts and help them out at the court, but we do need this, and we ask you for your help in hiring attorneys to represent these families.
Thank you. Next is Emilia Garibé, followed by Abby Taylor.
Buenos días, miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Emilia Garibay.
Good morning, members of the council, you know, of the board. My name is Emilia Garibay.
Yo vivo aquí en Redwood City.
I live here in Redwood City.
Mi congregación es la Iglesia San Antonio de Paul.
My congregation is San Antonio de Paul.
Mis hijos van a Woodside High School.
My children go to Woodside High School.
La razón de nuestra presencia hoy es para apoyar a nuestras familias hispanas.
The reason I'm here is to help and support our Hispanic families.
Sabemos que ellos proveen una aportación sencial y vital a la comunidad.
And we know that they provide essential and very vital support to the community.
En este país...
In this country.
Necesitamos más fondos para los abogados que trabajan con familias.
And we need more funds for the attorneys that work with the families.
Inmigrantes en sus procesos de emigración y deportación.
With these immigrant families and the deportation and immigration process.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Abby Taylor, followed by Wendy Verba, and then Allison Chang.
Good morning. My name is Abby Taylor. I live in North Fair Oaks, and I organize with Faith in Action and Daily City. Today, the importance of increasing funding specifically for deportation defense is being made sufficiently clear. Both counties surrounding us contribute at least three times what we are currently proposing for the next year, and we have so much resources in our county. Our most vulnerable should not be left unprotected. Removal defense is deportation prevention, and four attorneys for deportation defense is simply not sufficient with the need that we're seeing right now. So we ask that you find the money, put it towards the attorneys, so that we can protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Verba, followed by Allison Chang, and then Jack Burford.
Good morning. I'm Wendy Verba. I've lived in Burlingame 26 years, and I'm not an immigrant. I'm two generations removed, but from that perspective, we are all immigrants. And I'm really proud of San Mateo County, because it seems like a place where we take care of our neighbors. And I'm grateful for all that you have done and for all the support you've provided. However, these are not normal times. Our neighbors who are going in for their court hearings are being rounded up, and as a result, I understand that half, something like half of the people who have hearings are too afraid to show up and automatically are then rendered for deportation. So the need is going up just because of the terror and the fear. We have Marines in the streets in Los Angeles now. We are not far from Los Angeles. So these are not, these are not normal times, and we ask that you not wait for money to become available, that you act now, because the need is now.
Thank you. Mr. President, 14 more speakers from chambers, and then we'll take speakers from Zoom. We'll start with...
Through the clerk, can we have the last call for speakers?
From chambers, sure. The last call will be Veronica Martinez from chambers.
Thank you.
Sure. Allison Chang, followed by Jack Burford.
Good morning, President Canepa and supervisors. My name is Allison Chang. I live in San Carlos. I represent Peninsula DSA. We have hundreds of members all over San Mateo County. You've seen us organize campaigns for preschool and housing and public transit. I'll come back to talk to you about that next month. Right now, the need is to support our friends at Faith in Action Bay Area. We just want to second what they've been asking for the increase in budget to reflect the times that we live in. The rapid response program has been successful. We'd just like to see it larger so it meets the moment as a first step to making sure our immigrant workers are protected. And I'd also like to remind the supervisors of something that I just became aware of, that ICE is, you know, very indiscriminate, is not just attacking our Latinx neighbors, they're also attacking Asian immigrants. That's they went into a nightclub for people enjoying Pride. So we do have a very high Asian immigrant community, and we should be thinking about them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jack Burford, followed by Clara Jekyll.
Hello, my name is Jack Burford. I live in Redwood City, and I'm here with Faith in Action. I am a teacher, and I serve an area that is very highly Latino. And every time one of my students doesn't come in, I am terrified for them. I think about them and their families representing themselves, as so many have to, and I feel a very deep fear for them that does not go away until I see their faces again. We need three more lawyers. We appreciate the funding that you guys have already provided, but we need to find that $1 million to provide them representation. If we cannot protect them, if we cannot protect them entirely from ICE, at the very least, what we can do is provide them support from our community and in the courtrooms, so that they have the help that every member of this country is entitled to. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Clara Jekyll, followed by Allison Chang.
Hi, my name is Clara Jekyll. I live in Redwood City, and I'm a member of Island United Church in Foster City. I am a child of immigrants. My parents came to the United States in 1968, and eventually they were able to get green cards and settle here permanently. I want that same stability and security for all immigrant families. I'm so worried about the increased targeting of my immigrant neighbors and the threats to their families and our whole community in San Mateo County. I'm grateful that you have funded rapid response attorneys in the county budget, and I believe beyond that, we do urgently need more funding for deportation prevention. The need is so much greater this year due to the escalation of threats, and the existing legal services have no more capacity to serve all the residents calling the hotline. So please fund seven attorneys for removal defense this year. Your support on this is crucial to keeping our families, our neighborhoods, and our county intact. Thank you.
Thank you. 10 more speakers. The last call was already made. Magdalena Lara. Magdalena Lara. Thank you, followed by Sam Broomhead, and then Wendy Cruz.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Magdalena Lara. Soy líder de Fe en Acción.
Good morning. My name is Magdalena Lara, and I'm a member of Faith in Action, and I'm a leader with them.
Junta de supervisores. Gracias por financiar abogados de respuesta rápida, porque nuestra comunidad necesita este respaldo.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for funding the rapid response attorneys, because our community does really need this service.
Y es muy importante que la junta de supervisores del condado apruebe fondos para la prevención de la deportación para siete abogados.
And it's very important for the board to fund seven attorneys for the rapid response attorneys to avoid deportations.
Nuestra comunidad necesita más apoyo para nuestras familias en proceso de deportación ahora.
Our families need a lot more support that are in the process of deportation, and they need it now.
Ya que es más grande la necesidad que el año pasado.
Since the need for these attorneys is bigger this year than last year.
Para mí es muy importante comentar esto, por mi experiencia que he visto en la comunidad, que hemos visto familias que no pueden proveer el dinero para pagar un abogado.
It is very important for me to speak about this because of what I have witnessed in our communities, and many of the families do not have the funds to pay for an attorney.
Es por eso que pedimos que esta ayuda sea breve.
That's why we ask for this help that is quick, or brief.
Porque yo, que tengo 49 años viviendo aquí, he visto todas esas necesidades casi es año con año, y es urgente que nos llegue. Gracias.
And for me, that I have been here a resident for 49 years, I have seen the need all the time, and it's very important for this need, and we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lara. Next speaker is Sam Broomhead, followed by Wendy Cruz, and then Adriana Ariaga.
Good morning, members of the board. President Canepa, I am a volunteer with Faith in Action. I'm here from Daily City. I live in Pacifica. I want to thank you so far with your funding. It's not what we're hoping for, but it's definitely a start. Immigrants with defense attorneys are five times more likely to remain, and we are asking for three more attorneys. Defense attorneys mean community members get to stay in their homes, get to stay with their communities. And as a community organization, Faith in Action is looking to build community. This is the time to build community. Don't just consider where we are now, which is an unfortunate state of affairs, but where we could be in a year and where we want to be in a year. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Cruz, followed by Adriana Ariaga, and then Reina Gonzalez.
Hola, buenos días a todos.
Hello, good morning, everybody.
Especialmente este día, me da gusto darle gracias a los supervisores.
Especially this day, I am happy to give the thanks to all the supervisors.
Y especialmente al señor Canepa.
Especially to Mr. Canepa.
Porque yo fui una de las familias y soy un testimonio hoy en la mañana.
I am one of the families. I'm giving my testimony this morning.
De esa ayuda de los recursos que hay de ayuda legal en el Condado de San Mateo.
Of the resources that there is here in the county of San Mateo for legal services.
Y por eso ahora esta mañana yo me pongo aquí enfrente a darles gracias, pero sabemos que ahora hay más necesidad que cuando yo tuve este caso.
And that's why I'm here to thank you and for all the legal services, and I know that now the need is much bigger than when I needed the services.
Y especialmente pues como dije al señor Canepa, porque yo creo que él se acuerda, y por eso mi familia ahora está unida por ese fondo y por esa ayuda que insiste aquí en el Condado de San Mateo.
And especially because I know that perhaps Mr. Canepa...
And especially because I know that perhaps Mr. Canepa remembers me that, you know, I'm very grateful when I needed that help and that's why my family is still together.
Y ahora yo puedo ser una líder de Fe en Acción y estoy trabajando un poco más duro por estar con las familias para que también estén unidas.
And that's why today I'm a leader with Faith in Action and I'm working very hard to work with the families so that we can be together.
Y por eso yo ahora más pido de que hoy hay más necesidad y nosotros somos el testimonio como muchas familias lo van a hacer en el futuro.
And that's why the families need a lot of help. And here we, I'm here to give testimony because I know that in the future, just like myself that I'm here giving testimony, they will be here in the future.
Muchas gracias por todo.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adriana Ariaga, followed by Reina Gonzalez.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Adriana Ariaga and I live in District 2 of North Central San Mateo. I'm the Public Policy Manager at El Concilio, San Mateo County, and I want to thank Supervisor Corso and the rest of the Board of Supervisors for funding rapid response attorneys. Our community needs support now more than ever. I also believe it is crucial for the County Board of Supervisors to increase funding for deportation prevention from four to seven attorneys. Our community is experiencing a much higher level of persecution, so we must do more than last year. This is a very important, this is very important for us at El Concilio because many of the families we serve are undocumented neighbors, parents in schools, families that make up our community. They visit our office asking for immigration services, but our partner organizations are already at capacity. Many of these clients have a court order around the corner or need to submit their asylum documents. They are practically looking for the resources, but we don't have enough attorney resources. An extra attorney can prevent many families from being separated. Your support to increase the number of attorneys from four to seven is critical and it shows our county's ongoing commitment to protecting the dignity and safety of our immigrant community and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Reina Gonzalez, followed by Lorena Malgarejo, and then Adriana Guzman.
Good morning. My name is Reina Gonzalez. I'm here today representing my immigrant community. I'm the voice of the people who can speak, a member of College High Church, a member of Congregational Church. And I'm a volunteer with Fe in Action since 12, almost 12 years ago because my son got deported 12 years ago. Since then, I promised myself I'm gonna fight for my community, for my immigrant community. That's not fair, that. Police pulled him over and then immediately he called immigration. Since then, I'm fighting for my immigrant community. I went to College High. I'm in Pacific School of Religion in Berkeley. I graduated almost two years ago. I'm here asking, please help my immigrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorena Malgarejo, followed by Adriana Guzman, and then Paul Boca Negra.
Good morning. My name is Lorena. I am one of the co-directors of Faith in Action Bay Area. And I also am one of the people who answers the rapid response hotline 24/7 for nine years now. And in this new administration, we have seen the kind of need that we haven't since even the first time with Trump. So you heard everything. I want to share just that something that we're doing that's new right now is we're doing court accompaniment. So I've trained 100 people who are citizens here in San Mateo to accompany people to the immigration court, to the ICE check-ins because we don't have enough attorneys to do that. So it's a little bit of a contribution that we can do, those of us who are citizens are not at risk and can do that. And I have been at court almost every single day with our volunteers. I'm training them and mentoring them. And what I've seen is that, as you heard, most of our people, if not all of them, have not even had a consult with an attorney in San Mateo before going to court. So it's like being on trial and not knowing what to expect and what to do. And as we speak right now, at the immigration court in San Francisco, right now, ICE is in the waiting room. And I'm gonna run over there and we have some observers, but they're gonna detain people at the court again today in San Francisco. Our people are terrified. And what we do in the rapid response hotline is wonderful and I thank you. I thank the county. I thank you for your support. But we are, we are the, you know, we are just the emergency vehicle when the worst happen or to support people in an emergency. What the deportation defense attorneys and the removal defense attorneys do is prevention. So basically, I'm like an ambulance, but I don't have a hospital to take people to. So thank you for, I hope you can approve what's on the calendar right now. We need that funding right now. But I hope we continue this conversation and figure out how we actually provide what's needed so that people don't have to go to court by themselves. So I'm running to court now. Hopefully, nobody will get detained. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriana Guzman, followed by Paul Boca Negra, and then Arnold Morales.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Adriana Guzman. I'm also one of the dispatchers in the rapid response headlines in San Mateo County and a co-director with Faith in Action Bay Area. I'm here today just to share that as a person who has been in an asylum process, understand deeply how important it is to have an attorney beside you, preparing you and guiding you and how to present your case in order to prevent deportation. So the work that you have been supporting is amazing. We're really thankful. We are really thankful for being able to connect attorneys when the emergencies happen. But right now, the need of support to these many families in San Mateo County that we every day hear the stories and repeat and repeat the need of consultation. They are not really asking for full representation because they don't even have anyone to have a consultation. So we are really thankful for what you have done. And I'm here asking you to increase and keep this conversation alive to make sure that we can have more attorneys that can support families on this process to prevent deportations. Thank you.
Thank you. Three speakers from chambers. Paul Boca Negra, followed by Arnold Morales, and then our last speaker Veronica Martinez. The last call was already made. Thank you.
Good morning, our honorable supervisors, County Executive Caligi. Whenever you see my face in this building, it is in the name of the community. Many of you are aware of the work I do with our youth population. And I am here to ask that you support the rapid response and hire three more attorneys. I have youth that I am mentoring in this community and I represent this community from South to North County, from East to West County, and I have youth that are losing their fathers to deportation. I have kids that are living in vehicles that are being ticketed repeatedly here in Menlo Park. We need to do more. By God, what is coming to San Mateo County is going to cost more than a million dollars to help and to defend the destruction that is headed in our direction. I am here asking that you support this community and hire the three attorneys and hopefully we can get more support in learning how to better defend ourselves, sadly, against our own military and National Guard who's headed in this direction. Thank you so much and sí se puede.
Thank you, Mr. Boca Negra. Arnold Morales, followed by Veronica Martinez.
Hello, my name is Arnold Morales and I am a 40-year-old immigrant. I came here in 1982 from El Salvador after a horrible war that was promoted even more by one of our presidents Ronald Reagan and in which about 100,000 people died, one of them my father. My mother was here. I came. And I've been a resident of Redwood City for about 43 years. It recently took me 41 years, 42 years, to fix my status and I am one of those lucky ones. But what I see today is something that I don't recognize when we hear the national anthem. When I thought as an 11-year-old that I was coming to the United States, I don't recognize our country. I'm gonna ask for a few seconds more. What I hear about the million dollars, I wasn't aware of that. I live a few blocks from here and there was a project for putting rocks around Woodside Road to prevent homeless people from living there. I guarantee that project cost more than a million dollars. I believe it's time for this county to show where the priority is. We're talking about, everybody's talked about our real stories of immigration, but we're also talking about taxpayers. They're paid taxes. I own a business. I pay roughly more than $300,000 worth of federal taxes and about $50,000 of state taxes. These people that we're talking about are contributors. They're in our community. They're your neighbors. They're the ones who help you do the work that you don't do. It's time for you to show our commitment. I think it is embarrassment to think that a million dollars in a county such as this, when you pay a lot more to kick homeless people out of where they're trying to stay, more than what we're asking for here for this humane cost. Think about what this country means. Think about why you are sitting in that chair right now. And think, if you're thinking of minimum, should we do this? I know that there's a lot of issues that we need to fix.
If you can wrap up.
But this is the highest priority. I urge you and I thank you and I appreciate your words the other day in the news. Thank you, sir. But it's time to show our commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker from chambers is Veronica Martinez and then we'll start with Zoom comments.
Buenos dias, Supervisores. Mi nombre es Veronica Martinez y vivo en Redwood City y soy miembro de Fe en Acción.
Good morning. My name is Veronica Martinez and I am a member of Faith in Action and I live here in Redwood City.
Primero que nada, gracias por su apoyo a la respuesta rápida que se ocupa y se necesita mucho.
Thank you first of all for your support of the rapid response, which is needed very much.
Quiero agradecer por eso.
I want to be grateful to, I want to express my gratefulness to you for that.
Pero ahora, en estos momentos, es importante que en esta junta de supervisores del condado aprueben esos fondos.
And it is very important at this time that, you know, the supervisors approve those funds.
Para la prevención de deportación, para tener más abogados.
For the prevention of deportations so that we can have more attorneys.
Nuestra comunidad necesita más apoyo para nuestras familias en proceso de deportación ahora.
Our community needs more support for the families that are in the process of deportation.
Ya que es más grande la necesidad que el año pasado.
Since the need for this is much bigger this year than last year.
Por eso es urgente que actúen y apoyen poniendo fondos para que nuestra comunidad tenga un respaldo legal.
That is why it's important for you to support and respond quickly so that our families have the legal support.
Que acompañen el proceso que ha estado limitado para nuestras familias.
So they can be accompanied to the process that it has been very limited for our families.
Esto es esencial para no ver más familias inmigrantes separadas.
This is very essential so that we do not see more immigrant families separated.
Y nuestras familias en nuestra comunidad sean más estables.
And so their families and community is more stable.
Gracias porque sé que ustedes son personas conscientes.
Thank you because I know that you are persons, very conscientious persons.
Que han apoyado y no dejarán que nuestras familias sigan sufriendo.
And you have supported and you will continue preventing for our families to continue to suffer.
Sé que se tocarán su corazón por su comunidad que tanto los necesita ahora. Gracias.
And I know you would touch your heart to support and help our families. They need you so much. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers from chambers. So, Madam Clerk, please proceed with the Zoom comments.
Thank you. We have seven hands raised. Julie Threet, followed by Debbie L. Julie, please unmute and begin.
Thank you so much, San Mateo Board of Supervisors. This is Julie Threet. I came before you on May the 20th to implore you to stop with the administration of the COVID vaccine in your community. It's dangerous and I told you that my mother, an icon in Silicon Valley, had died from four shots. What I'm gonna do this morning, based on the fact that you've got so many immigrant families.
Madam Clerk, could we have the timer? Excuse me. Sorry.
It is on. It is on, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, it's going. So to the immigrant families in the chambers and that are listening, do not let this public health department immunize your children with the COVID-19 vaccine. It's dangerous. It's experimental. It's a gene therapy. We have 38,666 dead people in the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System alone. That's 59 more than when I came before you last May. Please go to freenowfoundation.org to look at what these immunizations are doing to your children. Again, I implore all of you that are listening from the immigrant community. We have a 60% chronic illness rate of our children in this country. I think you can do better. Please do not let them do this to your children. Again, freenowfoundation.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Debbie L., followed by David Rakowski. And after David speaks, Mr. President, would you like me to make a final call?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Debbie, please unmute and begin.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate all the comments so far and I just want to speak in support of increased funding. My name is Debbie Leschen. I live in Belmont. I'm a member of Belmont Neighbors Against Racism, Unitarian Universalist of San Mateo, Indivisible San Mateo. I'm also a teacher. And again, you know, all of the comments about increasing the funding, I believe this is a spiritual battle and sometimes spiritual battles require lawyers. And I think this is the case, so I really urge you to increase the funding. And I just noticed that on your agenda is, is a, you know, a, I don't know. Anyway, you are, I'm sorry, but you are honoring Dolores Huerta today. She's 95 years old and I just want you to channel Dolores's spirit. She is a national treasure and I urge everybody to, the PBS video Dolores, it was funded by Carlos Santana, and just watch it with your families, watch it with your children, and let's just channel Dolores today. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. David Rakowski, and then I'll make a final call before we call the next speaker X. David, please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name is Joanne Rakowski and I live in El Granada. I'm a member of Coastide Faith in Action and Faith in Action Bay Area, as well as the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community. First, thank you for funding the San Mateo Rapid Response Hotline and attorneys. I urge you to approve the funding in the consent agenda, but more is needed. I look around the coast side and see so many at risk. It's the elementary school children I tutor at El Granada and Moon Ridge. It's their parents. It's the people who help us maintain our home. It's the families I march with as they advocate for better housing. These are my neighbors, my friends. Please help them stay here where they belong. Help them keep their families together. I urge you to increase the funding for removal defense so that the current allocation goes up at least to 2.75 million to increase the attorney representation, four to seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne. Members of the public, at this time, I'd like to make a final call to raise your hand for public comment. Again, this includes the consent agenda, which begins at item 32 through and including closed session at item 129. Final call has been made. After this last speaker is announced, no further hands will be accepted. And the last speaker will be Sarait Eskorza. We have nine hands raised. We'll go back to X, followed by Ellen Haig. X, please unmute and begin.
Yes, good morning. I'm gonna ask for more time, another minute, because everybody else that were English speakers, some got as much as a minute and a half over. I'm actually opposed to this. I know you'll rubber stamp it and you'll be back soon to allocate more funding. But I represent the majority of people in this county. But I represent the majority of people in this county, not the people that are speaking here and have a vested interest in this issue, but the people that actually pay the tax dollars and are concerned about their safety and welfare. Last time I spoke, I asked you to cooperate with ICE for the removal of dangerous felons, rapists, murderers, that sort of people. And instead, I was attacked by Ray Mueller and an immigration attorney that called me a racist and xenophobe because I am concerned about my safety. I really believe that most of the people speaking are ill-informed. The riots in LA were perpetrated by a hoax. They were not at Home Depot rounding up people. There was no pictures of it for a reason, because that's not what they're doing. They were serving warrants on employers for tax-related crimes. Also, the National Guard is not being deployed to attack people. They're protecting buildings in downtown LA and federal employees. These people need to do their research. And everybody else speaking today, if you really are concerned about this issue, put your money where your mouth is. The lady in Menlo Park, sell your home, donate it to charity. You know, you don't see these people actually doing much other than pandering to people that came into this country illegally, breaking our laws, they're unvetted. We need to have them go before an immigration court to see who's here legally and wants to be part of the society, as opposed to those that are taking advantage and committing crimes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. We'll now go to Ellen Haig, followed by Kate Lewis. Ellen, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Ellen Haig. I'm a longtime resident of Pacifica and a taxpayer and a leader with Faith in Action Bay Area and Coastside Faith in Action. I don't know what kind of a country we are all waking up to this morning. Here in San Mateo County, we must do all we can to push back and stop the targeting of members of our immigrant community. It is our moral obligation to protect and defend our immigrant neighbors. I urge you to increase funding for the deportation defense in our country. As Americans, we all know what's written under the Statue of Liberty. It's the immigrant story. It's about, bring me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to be free. Supervisors, you are our elected leaders. We are counting on you to increase the deportation defense fund, and I'd like to echo the requests from the Faith in Action leaders to keep this urgent conversation going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Kate Lewis, followed by Commissioner Rasmussen. Kate, please unmute and begin.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kate Lewis. I'm a senior immigration removal defense attorney at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. As you know, the last few months, and specifically the last like two or three weeks, have been incredibly difficult for immigrant communities and their advocates in San Mateo County. I've been an attorney responder on the Rapid Response Network in San Mateo County for about four years, and I've gotten more calls over the course of the last week than I had the entire previous four years. My, this last week, we received calls almost every day, which means that San Mateo County residents were being arrested by ICE. This is on top of our regular casework representing people in court, providing legal consultations and more. And just to respond to the woman who called earlier, the Trump administration actually eliminated prosecutorial discretion rules that encouraged ICE to target criminals and terrorists, and now everybody is fair game. So unfortunately, we were seeing community members with no criminal history being targeted. Due to lack of funding, our staffing levels are well below what they were just a year ago, which means we have fewer people that we can help despite a huge increase in need. So we are asking the Board of Supervisors to please help us help our community members, immigrant community members, and support removal defense funding in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder to the public, the final call had been made for public comment, so if your hand is lowered, that's why. Commissioner Rasmussen, followed by Richard Tabore. Commissioner, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. Johanna Rasmussen, Chair of the San Mateo County Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission, and I am here this morning to speak to you on behalf of the many families and children that we serve. And our families and our children are in crisis. Their anxiety is through the roof. They are terrified. They are not sure what's going to happen to them, or if they're going to be torn apart. These are unprecedented times that require extraordinary measures, so please allocate the funding needed to adequately represent and protect our children and families. And I am also a taxpayer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Johanna. Richard Tabore, followed by iPhone. Richard, please unmute and begin.
I live in Moss Beach, and I'm here to ask for your support in helping to facilitate discussions about the roads and other issues related to the Seal Cove area. In addition, I would like to just say, I sat through the last hour of listening to these comments from the people that are supporting the immigrants and some of the families, and it is extremely moving, and I would assume that almost everybody that lives in San Mateo County would be in support of increasing that funding. It's terrible what's going on. But back to Seal Cove, I sent an email as well, and I know Representative Supervisor Mueller is setting up a meeting for tomorrow night, but I would like to have you put a budget item and a line item for dealing with Seal Cove and all the issues that we want to do. And there's more in the email that I sent. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Three speakers. iPhone, followed by Martin Fox. iPhone, please unmute and begin.
Hi, good morning, supervisors and staff. My name is Lord Espez. I am a proud East Palo Alto resident. I'm also an organizer with Silicon Valley, D-Bug, during San Mateo County Participatory Defense. I work with immigrant families. I come from immigrant families. My family is primarily made up of immigrants, which are documented and undocumented, and I am just asking for more funding for the attorneys to do the work. We are in a big need here, and San Mateo County is also referred to as all of California in one due to the diverse range of landscaped communities and demographics that we encompass. So we also have to include all of our immigrant community members. So again, please increase that funding. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, Lord Es. Martin Fox, followed by our last speaker, Sarai. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, President Canepa and members of board. Thank you very much for your patience this morning, and thank you very much for starting to advise and adopt Senate Bill 43. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. And finally, our last called speaker, Sarai Escorza, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, supervisors and staff. My name is Sarai Tescorza. I'm a community organizer with Silicon Valley D-Bug, who also, as my colleague mentioned, is participatory defense in San Mateo County and also part of the San Mateo County Coalition for Immigrants' Rights. And today, I'm here to speak about the current gap that currently exists in deportation defense. As a community advocate that directly supports families, we're having to seek legal resources outside of San Mateo County and even outside the state. I'm the one that has to tell families that, you know, we don't have the resources here to support their loved ones here in San Mateo County. This is a significant need that has been underfunded, and I can only anticipate rapidly increasing. This is the moment for the county to be bold and invest in our immigrant community and fund deportation defense in this unprecedented times. There's no price tag to our families staying together and keeping our families safe. We must do better.
Thank you, Sarai. That was our last comment, Mr. President. I'll turn it over to Mr. Clerk for written comments.
Mr. President, several written comments were received yesterday and this morning, and they were emailed to the board and also made publicly available. I did receive 10 more comments. Very brief, I'll just say the names and summarize one comment from Joe Stromback, Kendall Pierce, Nicole Beggs, Ellis Gadella, Crystal Sue, Ew Park, Lily Novab, Violet Dar, Chelsea Goldsmith, Simona Vallone. They just mentioned, please urge to make a deeper investment in deportation prevention by funding three more removal defense attorneys in this year's budget. I send a public comment.
Great, thank you very much. I really want to thank those who shared their comments today. We'll now take action to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda. I understand that staff are requesting a minor change to a resolution attached to item 121, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to distribute public education and governmental access capital funds to the public education government access provider for the county coast side area. Specifically, staff is asking that this item's resolution, the fourth paragraph, after the "now therefore" clause should be revised to replace the word "equipment" with the word "items." The word "on" is also missing before the phrase and annual in the same paragraph. With those changes, item 121 included, can I get a motion to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso? Okay, she is absent. Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Corso being absent.
Let the record reflect through the clerk that Vice President Corso is at her son's graduation. I think moving forward for the roll call, we understand that she's absent because of her son's graduation.
Sure.
We'll now move to presentations and awards. We have five items today under the heading. We'll start with item one, which is a presentation or proclamation designating July 20th through 26, 2025, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corso. Supervisor Corso, as mentioned, is at her son's graduation, so I'll read the following comments. On behalf of Supervisor Corso, Supervisor Corso is proud to sponsor the proclamation proclaiming the week of July 20th, 2026, 2025, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week. Since the board does not convene in July, probation services play a vital role in this county's justice system, supervising an average of more than 2,200 adults and 180 juveniles, and managing more than 1,140 individuals released to the community prior to trial or sentencing. Our 215 probation employees, 215 probation employees are essential to the rehabilitation process, working with those in our justice system, define value and motivation, and pursuing a more productive path for themselves. Supervisor Keane, if you can explain to us, I believe the theme is heroes behind the mission, transforming lives, enhancing public safety. The famous Chief Keane, thank you for joining us. Probation Chief.
Thank you very much, President Canepa, Honorable Board Members, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Nivlin, Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you all very much for having me this morning. I'll be super brief. I know you have a very busy agenda. Just want to say thank you on behalf of the men and women of the probation department. Although the who and the how we do our work has changed, the why we do it and the who we do it for hasn't. At the end of the day, we are people who deeply believe in the work in terms of helping individuals. We believe that people have the capacity to change if given the right support and the right conditions. And so, public service is the reason why we get up every day and the hope that folks are going to be in the right opportunities and in the right spaces for themselves. And so, our men and women come to work every day with that mission. And so, this proclamation and your support means the world to us. We really believe in this thing, in this thing called probation. It is something that goes back many, many years, and it's our hope that it will last for many, many years to come. We are a small but mighty department. We are growing, hopefully, over the next couple of years, where we can get our numbers up to have a little bit more of a stronger force, but just know that they come to work every day to work hard for this county and for its citizens. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Great, thank you so much, Chief. Do we have any comments for the chief?
To the Chair, I just want to say thank you for all your work, all that you do in our communities. Great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakership from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
On Zoom, please click Raise Hand to Comment for item number one. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Goshay, would you like to make a motion to approve this item?
So moved. I'd like to approve June, July 20th through 26th as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso is absent. Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. We have a proclamation for you, Chief. Thank you all very much. We'll now move to item two, which is an action to approve the presentation of proclamation affirming and commemorating June 19th, 2025, in the county of San Mateo as Juneteenth. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Goshay.
Thank you, President Canepa. Today, we recognize and celebrate Juneteenth. Commemorates June 19th, 1865, when enslaved African-Americans in Galveston, Texas, were finally informed of their freedom, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. It serves as a powerful reminder that freedom in this country was not granted all at once, and that the pursuit of civil rights and true liberty has been long, difficult, and unfinished. Juneteenth is both a celebration and a call to action to honor the strength and resilience of Black communities and to confront the ongoing legacy of systemic racism. It is a time to recognize the contributions and leadership of Black Americans in shaping our future, our history, culture, and future. Our community reaffirms its commitment to fairness, opportunity, and justice for all. We stand with Black residents, leaders, and advocates who continue to push for meaningful progress in our neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and in strengthening our democracy. As we raise this proclamation, we not only acknowledge the importance of Juneteenth, we commit to doing our part to build a society where all people are treated with respect and dignity. With that, I'd like to invite the Bay Area Community Health Advisors to the podium to share more about the work to eliminate health disparities across generations and their efforts to create space of belonging for Black families and youth through education and services.
Thank you so much. I'm Shaunee Stevenson. I'm the co-manager of the African-American Community Assessment and Mental Health Initiative. I have my colleague here.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I'm Cassandra Jackson, also one of the co-managers as well.
And we have our great executive director who's taken some pics over here, Lisa Tealer. And we have our Black Youth Advisory Board. Can you introduce yourself, just say your name and where you're from?
Hi, my name is Tochi Bianski, and I'm from Pacifica.
Good morning. My name is Dolores Moore, and I'm from East Palo Alto.
Hi, my name is Saheri Kenshin, and I'm from East Palo Alto.
So we're going to take a little bit to talk a little bit about our project. And so I'm kind of moved this morning with all the news. That's really hard as I look at my own grandbaby, who is a child of an immigrant. Her dad is an immigrant. And as we talk about our project, you'll hear some stats in there. We won't say them today, but I want to name that part of the African-American Community Assessment, about 4% of our immigrants are naturalized immigrants from Africa, Caribbean, Jamaican, those kinds of things, but also about, that was 4% and 5% Black identified as Hispanic. So, that's about 9% in our assessment. And so, just want to name that this issue of immigration is significant for us, and it touches our community. So, for over 30 years, BAC HAC has been the go-to trusted resource for the community-based and culturally relevant approaches that effectively engages diverse communities across generations, whether it's cancer prevention and education, COVID outreach, census voter registration, and mental health awareness, or just to get a kickoff to a healthy journey. BAC HAC has leveraged the insights gained from Juneteenth and the historical context by ensuring timely access to information for essential navigation and support services leading towards healthy individuals, families, and communities. We provide knowledge for life. We literally save lives and empower communities. I have given you all a packet so you could learn a little bit more about our historical context, but also three posters that are in there that we were funded to do for the Mental Health Initiative, and they're from local clinicians that are African American or identify as Black, and they share how to break the stigma of dealing with racism. So, just want to make sure you have those if you want to post them in your office as a reminder. As a go-to trusted resource, BAC HAC was chosen to lead the African American Community Assessment for San Mateo County in partnership with San Mateo County AOD and BHRS as part of the Strategic Prevention Plan to learn about social and environmental factors that prevent and contribute to substance use amongst Black youth. And in your packet, you will also see our executive summary. The assessment was designed, implemented, analyzed with, for, by the Black community and community leaders and our youth and our young adults. And we were one of the first in the county to be able to do that, and that was because of your innovation and your ideas to really get more information from the people who the information is impacting the most.
All right, we had one of the opportunities to conduct this survey. If you want to move to the next slide, whoever might be controlling that, that'd be great. These findings, the data was gathered from surveys, online surveys, paper surveys, as well as focus groups and key informant interviews. What we found is that the youth are not using, over 53% of Black youth have never used drugs. But of those, 48% did not use, but you do have those who did use. A reason for using drugs was due to coping with stress, racism, loneliness, and grief. The research also suggests that strategies that have been employed for foster resistance, also resilience, and promote recovery from substance use is equally effective in preventing substance use with African American or Black youth and the community. Black youth has, and the community, what we found stressed a strong desire for a connection. They wanted gatherings. They wanted opportunity to get together because we are about less than 2% of the population here in San Mateo County. And what you found, just as there's a pandemic of loneliness, our Black youth are experiencing that in our counties and in our schools. And so, one of the things that we found from our surveys, particularly through our focus group, was that the stronger connection was needed. They seek support. They seek resources. They seek opportunities to experience Black joy and to experience a deeper culture learning and to combat loneliness, grief, depression, resiliency against the effects of racism. Our committee, the African American Planning Development, was an intergenerational committee of over 18 different people. You had about frequently 13 people that actively came. And from there, they reviewed the results, and there were seven recommendations that was determined and that was used. One of the seven you find is that we have a community-wide, a county-wide, Black Youth Advisory Board, and these young ladies are part of the second cohort of this. We have been very privileged and fortunate to work with these youth, and they cover the entire county of San Mateo County from north, central, as well as south county. They are in public schools, private schools. We have one in the foster care system, and they provide us with feedbacks. We design programming and leadership. Currently, we're doing a Leadership Institute with them as well, and they've just completed their second annual Black family hangout. And this was an idea that was designed by our youth, and that was for the entire community. And so, we're really excited about these youth and really the privilege to serve them and work and walk alongside. You will find in the packet the other seven recommendations that we are currently also implementing as well. Thank you so much for your time, and we do appreciate you.
We do have one speaker, one of our founding members. I think she put in a public comment. Is it okay if she speak here? Okay. So, I'm going to ask Dolores Moore to come up, and you will hear her voice. She just graduated from Sacred Heart. We're so proud of her, and she has a passion to become a clinician or work in psychology. I don't know which one. I know she's going to go far. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dolores.
Good morning, members of the board. I'd like to speak a little on my experience in the Black Youth Advisory Board and a little bit on Juneteenth and its importance. Being a part of the Black Youth Advisory Board has been such a meaningful experience for me. Through listening to different people in my community and hearing their stories, I've been able to reconnect with my roots and build real confidence in who I am. I'm reminded that I'm part of something much bigger than myself. I've helped organize events that bring Black students together to connect and uplift each other. Most recently, we hosted our second annual Black family hangout. The energy was full of joy, with Black students sharing space and feeling proud of their identities. In being part of the Black Youth Advisory Board, I've come to realize that I can make a positive impact. I don't have to wait until I'm older or more qualified, but I can start where I am right now. Juneteenth is about honoring the past by investing in the future. It's a reminder that we're all connected, and that part of the freedom is making space for people to feel seen and valued. Real freedom is a commitment we live out every day, and even when it's hard, we keep choosing it together. Thank you for having me.
Any questions or anything? I don't know what to do.
I have, I have one question, Mr. President. I forgot your name.
Dolores.
Dolores? Dolores, when it was being said that you feel somewhat isolated as an African American youth, could you give us a little context for that?
I think for me personally, going to a private school such as Sacred Heart, the population of Black students is very low. I think it's about, I think it's less than 1%. And I felt that like there hasn't been much support either in the classroom when it's come to like having like education that reflects my identity. So, I think that's kind of where I feel it, and then also like having other students there with me who are also Black.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no other questions. I'm just looking at my colleagues as well. I just appreciate your presentation and the courage it takes to stand up at that microphone and deliver messages. Thank you so much for all that you've done, and I'm sorry we missed the Black Hangout on Sunday. Through the chair, are you ready for a motion? Or do we?
Why don't we take, we'll get, we'll take a public comment, and then you can make the motion.
Sure. Sure. I do have two speakers for, on number two, Donna Rutherford, followed by Lisa Tealer.
I'm Donna Rutherford, and I am a longtime resident of East Palo Alto. I was born and raised here in San Mateo County 74 years ago. I'm a former elected official, former mayor of East Palo Alto, and I'm here just to thank the Board of Supervisors for acknowledging and recognizing Juneteenth. And as I sat earlier, listening to all of the experiences of the immigration, we are living in uncertain times, and I really appreciated the fact that when I was walking over to this building, Abby Taylor and the group of people that were out there, she wanted to start off with a prayer, and I think we do need prayer because the administration is doing things that are, have never been seen before. And I just want to say thank you for supporting this, and you have a hard job. I'm glad I'm not doing it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rutherford. Last speaker from chambers is Lisa Tealer.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and staff. I just want to thank all of you, and I appreciate the invitation by Supervisor Goshay to participate in the county-sponsored activities for Juneteenth and to really highlight the voices of our Black Youth Advisory Board, especially in these times with diverse communities and community-based organizations like ourselves that are serving these communities are also under attack. So, I really appreciate your support. I also want to take this time to thank, on behalf of BAC HAC, to thank you for the recognition of our services to the community for 30 years. This effort was led by Supervisor Corso and her staff with the resolution honoring Mrs. Gloria Brown, one of the co-founders of our organization, and the members of BAC HAC for 30 years. I also want to thank Supervisor Goshay and Supervisor Canepa for stopping by at the event. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Quirk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask for Zoom to raise hand for item two for Juneteenth. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Yes. Supervisor Spear?
To the young women who are here, this is a great example of how your voices can really affect change. This is now the first year in which June 19th will be recognized as a federal holiday, and this whole effort began in 2020. So, in a very short period of time, we've moved the needle on recognizing the shameful event back in 1865. So, a great lesson for all of us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I just want to really make a quick comment. Really want to thank you, Lisa Tealer, for your consistent leadership. I mean, the soul stroll, I just couldn't, I was amazed at how many people were there. And so, it's a reflection of who you are, your character, and it was great to see Maurice Goodman and others. You know, I think at the, at the end of the day, it's uplifting to see our youth. It's uplifting to see what leadership looks like. I want to thank you for your comments. I think they were just truly extraordinary. They were authentic, but really, thank you for all that you do, really. It really uplifts all communities, and I'm just happy that you came here today to share your comments and thoughts. And so, with that, Supervisor Goshay?
Thank you. Just before I make a motion, I want to remind the community that tomorrow we will be doing the Juneteenth flag raising here in front of the building at 10:00 a.m., and also invite everyone out to the Juneteenth celebration that the county is working with NAACP on, and that's going to be Saturday, June 21st, from 12:00 to 5:00, at Eastside Prep in East Palo Alto. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to affirming and commemorating June 19th in the county of San Mateo as Juneteenth.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Supervisor Mueller, thank you. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Corso being absent.
We'll now move to item three, which is an action to approve the presentation or proclamation designating June 2025 as Immigrant Heritage Month. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corso and myself. San Mateo County has long been home to communities from all over the world. Most of us have roots somewhere far away, and many of us trace our heritage to many different places. Yet, all of us are ancestors. Before us, we have made San Mateo County home. In fact, San Mateo County recently received recognition from the national nonprofit Welcoming America as a four-star welcoming place. This means that we're not just home to a vibrant immigrant population, but we're also being recognized as a leader in welcoming and belonging work. Additionally, immigrants are making substantial economic contributions. In 2019 alone, immigrants contributed $53.8 billion to San Mateo County's GDP, 40% of the total despite making up just 35% of our population. The county of San Mateo Board of Supervisors is proud to reaffirm our commitment to supporting and empowering all communities. Our differences are one of our greatest strengths. I'd like to acknowledge the invaluable work of the Office of Community Affairs does every day, day in and day out. Community Affairs is a division of the County Executive's Office, serving as a liaison between county departments and the community to facilitate information sharing, feedback, and to provide immigrant services to residents, whether that's through public art and beautification projects, immigrant integration support, Census 2020, and community engagement meetings. OCA makes sure that our residents have the information and resources to understand the latest initiatives from our office and opportunity to provide input. OCA has an incredible leader in Emma Gonzalez, an incredible team including Megan Gosh, Kenny Chu, Jennifer Castro-Laura, Bo Unga, Lisette Barasa, Sarah Duett Feldman, Carolina Salinas, and Nancy Cubius. I now like to welcome Deputy County Executive Justin Mates to say a few words. Mr. Mates?
Thank you, President Canepa, Honorable Board Members, Justin Mates, Deputy County Executive. I am here standing in the place of Emma Gonzalez, the Director of our Office of Community Affairs, who unfortunately was not able to be with us today. We have with us here most, but not all, of the Office of Community Affairs team. As Supervisor, President Canepa acknowledges, the Office of Community Affairs provides many services to our immigrant community. It is a division of the County Executive's Office that really serves to coordinate county services specifically for our immigrant residents. We have with us today members of the immigrant services team, represented by Megan Gosh and Sarah Duett Feldman, who are the primary point of contact for newcomers seeking assistance, and they help coordinate and convene the large network of community service providers who provide services to our immigrant residents. We also have our outreach team here today, represented by Kenny Chu and Nancy Cubius and Val Allen and Jennifer Castro-Laura here, who provide targeted and really high-touch outreach to our immigrant residents and other vulnerable groups with valuable information about services and programs specifically designed to meet the needs of those communities. On behalf of the Office of Community Affairs, we are honored to be part of the recognition of June as Immigrant Heritage Month. I think I can speak for the entire staff to say we are proud to live in a county that honors our immigrant heritage and that values the contributions of our immigrant community. In terms of events and activities to celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month, the Office of Community Affairs all month will be uplifting today members of the immigrant services team, represented by Megan Gosh and Sarah Duett Feldman, who are the primary point of contact for newcomers seeking assistance, and they help coordinate and convene the large network of community service providers who provide services to our immigrant residents. We also have our outreach team here today, represented by Kenny Chu and Nancy Cubius and Valve Allen and Jennifer Castro-Laura here, who provide targeted and really high-touch outreach to our immigrant residents and other vulnerable groups with valuable information about services and programs specifically designed to meet the needs of those communities. On behalf of the Office of Community Affairs, we are honored to be part of the recognition of June as Immigrant Heritage Month. I think I can speak for the entire staff to say we are proud to live in a county that honors our immigrant heritage and that values the contributions of our immigrant community. In terms of events and activities to celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month, the Office of Community Affairs all month will be uplifting voices and stories from immigrants who call San Mateo County home. These will be posted and highlighted on the Office of Community Affairs website and will really serve to showcase the rich diversity and resilience of our community here. Also, during Immigrant Heritage Month on June 21st, the Office of Community Affairs will be hosting a Community Resource Fair. That's actually going to happen right here at 500 County Center in the Courtyard. So, that's June 21st, 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. There will be over 30 community partners sharing valuable information about their programs and resources, not only for our immigrant residents, but for all our residents, to help our residents thrive in all aspects of life. There will be live performances, music, good food. It'll be a good time, a great event during Immigrant Heritage Month, and we invite all the community to join us. Once again, June 21st, here in the Courtyard at 500 County Center.
Great. Thank you so much. Are the colleagues, are there any comments? Yes, Supervisor Gochet.
Thank you for this report. I just have some written remarks. As we recognize Immigrant Heritage Month, I want to express my unwavering support for our immigrant neighbors and community members. In light of the recent events in Los Angeles that have heightened fear and uncertainty, I want to reaffirm that our immigrant community is not only vital, but helps shape the vibrant, diverse world we live in. Our immigrant community deserves protection, and we must stand together as a united front. This is not the time for division. These are the moments that call for solidarity and collective action. The county has affirmed, remains firmly committed to funding immigrant services. I hear the concern of our residents clearly and urgently, and in response, I encourage the County Executive's Office to continue the conversation with community partners regarding funding needs. I stand in solidarity with our immigrant community, and I am committed to working with you. My door is open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? If we could take public comment right now, Sukie?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for item three, Immigrant Heritage Month. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great. Supervisor Mueller, would you like to make a motion to approve this item?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
All right. Second by Supervisor Spear. Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear. Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And President Kanapa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Corzo being absent.
Great. Thank you very much. We have a presentation.
Let's get in a little closer. Okay. All right. One, two, three. Oops. Ready? One, two, three. Okay. Thank you. One more. Sorry. Thank you. Two, three. Thank you.
All right. We'll now move to item four, which is an action to accept the annual report by the San Mateo County Youth Commission. I'm sponsoring this item. The San Mateo County Youth Commission is an advisory commission to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, established in 1993 to address youth needs in the county and to provide youth voices in local government, and I'm proud to serve as its liaison to the Board of Supervisors. In the FY 2425 term, the commission had 24 members between the ages of 13 and 21 who reside in San Mateo County. These 24 outstanding youth reside throughout the county with representatives from all five supervisory districts. In addition to serving on the Youth Commission, many of these commissioners serve as youth liaisons to other county boards and commissions, providing youth perspective and insight on a broad range of issues. Staffing the Youth Commission are John Allen, Senior Management Analyst, and Helen Lay, Management Analyst from our Budget Performance and Policy Office in the county's Executive Office. Today, our Chair, Nor Choudry, a senior at San Mateo High School, will be presenting the FY 2425 Youth Commission Annual Report and may be joined by Vice Chair Cassidy Watson, a senior at Sequoia High School. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Nor Choudry, and I was the chair for the 2024 to 2025 term. Unfortunately, my Vice Chair Cassidy could not be with us today as she's under the weather, but I'm honored to have the pleasure of presenting our annual report to you today. So, this year, oh yeah, next slide's good.
You have a clicker right there.
Oh, perfect. Oh, okay. This year, we had six ad hoc subcommittees. Five of them stayed on from previous terms, and those ones were civic engagement, educational equity, environmental justice, health and wellness, and immigrant youth. The new one that we added during our treat in August was community equity, and we were all really excited to have that new addition on our commission. So, yeah, as President Kanapa stated, a lot of our youth commissioners are liaisons to various boards and commissions in the county. Here are the boards and commissions that we worked with this year. Those were the Behavioral Health Commission, the Commission on the Status of Women, the Parks Commission, the San Mateo County Board of Education, first five, the Commission on Aging, and the Commission on Disabilities. So, now I will give, oops. So, now I will give an overview of what each subcommittee did. To start off, I have civic engagement. They focused on two projects this year, number one being a diversity series on Instagram and the second one being civic education pamphlets. So, the point of the diversity series was to highlight the diverse leadership of the county. They essentially reached out to individuals that they wanted to highlight, and if they were, if they received a response, they used that information in their spotlights. And if not, they used publicly available information in order to craft what they would post on Instagram. The second project was civic engagement pamphlets, and the problem here was that our subcommittee noticed that youth don't receive enough education about voting in local government, and so they developed educational pamphlets intended for teenagers. This includes information such as positions that we vote for, as well as how to vote. And these pamphlets were distributed to schools and public spaces. They printed over 200 pamphlets this year and have plans to increase their distribution efforts next year. Now, to move on to community equity, which is our new subcommittee, they worked on three main projects this year. The first one was their necessities drive, where they worked with Safe Harvest Marathon House in South San Francisco, and they collected resources for unhoused individuals. So, these resources ranged from things such as hygiene products to warm clothing to even board games. And then, they worked on two resolutions. Both of these resolutions will be presented in the FY 2025 to 2026 legislative term. The first resolution was regarding nitrous oxide, and they drafted this in order to remove nitrous oxide from smoke shops, raise the legal age of nitrous oxide to 21, and require more credentials for the sale of nitrous oxide in order to make the community a little bit safer. The second resolution that they worked on was the teen dating violence resolution, and this had a goal of education on the issue of teen dating violence, spreading awareness, and creating legislative change. Next up, we have educational equity. They focused on one major project this year, which was regarding career exploration. They noticed that youth have less career exploration opportunities in underserved areas of the county, and also that students in our county want and need career resources. So, they decided to hold two virtual events, which encompassed a total of 11 speakers and shared recordings with schools on the San Mateo County website because though they got turnout, they wanted to make sure that these important speakers could reach even more audiences. The speakers ranged from people in pediatric occupational therapy to people working on AI cancer care to bakery owners. Our subcommittee wanted to be able to reach as many sorts of careers that they could, and so they were really successful in their outreach to those leaders in our county. Okay. Next, we have environmental justice, and they focused on two main projects this year. The first was their environmental career exploration, in which they planned a three-day program for youth to spend time in nature, learn hands-on about environmental careers, and network with professionals. They did all the setup for this event, and due to lack of response, we're not able to hold this event this year. But luckily, given the great foundation that they set up this term, they, all they have to focus on next term is just outreach to youth in our county, because their program that they put together is a really great one, and honestly, like, I think I would join it if I could. So, yeah. And then, the second one that they worked on was the plastic water bottle resolution, which builds on their resolution last year to end the sale of, or end the use of plastic ware in San Mateo Union High School, in the San Mateo Union High School District. Last year, they worked on removing all plastic utensils in the schools, and this year, they realized that even though they removed plastic foodware, they weren't able to fully take out all plastic in the schools, and so they worked on passing a resolution to end the sale of plastic water bottles in the district. They received over 1,250 petition signatures, and through this, they're prioritizing reusability and sustainable single-use bottles. So, next, we have our Health and Wellness Subcommittee, who worked on three main projects this year. The first was mental health directories, and these directories include tips and resources about anxiety, stress, relationships, and health, both mental and physical. They were able to print these directories out and distribute them to seven libraries in the county, and will be working more on their distribution efforts next term. They also have an ongoing project called Mental Health Messages, where they raise awareness about health-related resources and tips through the Youth Commission Instagram. These messages have proved really important in the past. They feature things such as how to deal with stress for finals or working with friends on solutions. And then, the final project that they worked on was an Art as Healing workshop. So, they designed this to help youth explore and manage stress through accessible art-based activities and focus on the therapeutic power of art. Okay, finally, for our subcommittees, we have immigrant youth. So, immigrant youth worked on three main projects this year. The first was a very long-running project called the Immigrant Youth Scholarship, which awards $5,000 scholarships to immigrant youth in our county. This scholarship and the recipients are determined by applications that the Immigrant Youth Subcommittee writes up every single year, and the scholarship is available to youth in our county pursuing higher education, so anyone from 12th grade to 25 years old. Next, they worked on the Community Directory, which is a multi-page pamphlet. This year, they focused on three cities, San Bruno, San Mateo, and Redwood City. These pamphlets provide information for new, information for new students and families, such as restaurants that take EBT, local public transportation routes, and local sports organizations for youth. We try to cover every single sort of resource that a person new to the area might want or need. Finally, the Immigrant Youth Subcommittee continued with their distribution of red cards, which has been going on for a few years now. This year, they decided to distribute it to recreation centers and libraries. In the past, they distributed to community colleges and high schools, and this year, they aim to target areas with high populations of immigrants. Okay, last up, we have some information about our communications officers. So, they focused on two main goals this year, school visits and community engagement. So, for school visits, they reached out to schools in the county that historically have less participation with the San Mateo County Youth Commission, and they were able to outreach to Terra Nova during their lunch hour and table there. They're also creating media outreach, media for outreach to schools, so this would be a comprehensive video that could be sent out to schools to inform students of the work that the Youth Commission does and how to join. And then, finally, they worked on, they worked a lot with community engagement. They kept the community informed with the Youth Commission updates through our Instagram, and they also developed a newsletter this year that is open to everyone who wants to sign up, and they distribute quarterly newsletters to those on the email list. Finally, they grew, they grew our Instagram and did outreach at events throughout the county. In summary, I'd like to say that the Youth Commission had a really great year this year. We added a new subcommittee. We worked on multiple new projects. We drafted resolutions, and we expanded our reach even further than before. All of the work that we had done would not be possible without John Allen and Helen Lay. They worked tirelessly to help us answer every single question that we had, provided resources that we didn't even know were available. And then, I would also like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for continuing to support youth issues in our county. Thank you so much.
That was awesome. Great job. Are there any questions, any comments?
All I can say is wow. I am so impressed, as I'm sure my colleagues are, with what you have accomplished. And this nitrous oxide issue is one that should be taken to one of our state legislators to make sure that we have a state law that would prohibit nitrous oxide to be sold to youth. And then, the water bottle issue, have you taken it before the school board to see if they would ban them?
Yeah, it was passed for the San Mateo Union High School District.
By the school board?
Yeah.
Great. Well, I mean, just an outstanding presentation. Congratulations, and your speaking ability is remarkable.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That means a lot.
Are there any other comments? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for the annual report by the Youth Commission, item four. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Spear, would you like to make a motion to accept the annual report by the San Mateo County Youth Commission?
I make that motion enthusiastically.
All right. Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear. Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And President Kanapa.
Yes, and Nor, just on a personal note, just thank you for the commission and what you've done, especially on the committee structures, not only moving policy, which I think is important, but really moving outreach. We really appreciate it. So, thank you for you and the Youth Commission's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We next have item five, which is a county health presentation on life expectancy in San Mateo County. This item, again, is sponsored by Supervisor Corzo and myself. I'm proud to introduce this important item alongside Supervisor Corzo, that we both advocated for during our board retreat in March. Today, we'll hear a presentation from county health on life expectancy in San Mateo County, an issue that touches every one of us as we strive to be a healthier community. Life expectancy is more than just a number. It reflects the conditions in which people are born, grow, live, work, and age. It's a powerful measure of health equity or inequity. In a county as diverse as ours, it's critical we look at where disparities exist and why. These findings can help guide policy, improve access to care, and target resources where they're most needed. We're grateful for the work of Dr. Kismet Baldwin Santana, our county health officer, who's going to provide us with a presentation. Thank you for joining us, Dr. Baldwin.
Thank you, President Kanapa, honorable members of the board, Mr. Calagui when he comes back, Mr. Nivel. comes back, Mr. Nivlin, and Ms. Rodriguez, for the opportunity to present on life expectancy in San Mateo County. So we're going to start with the bottom line upfront, what we want you to take away from this presentation. And uh first, it's that overall, the health outcomes for San Mateo County, such as life expectancy, are very good. Uh, investments made over the years and resources put into the community have likely contributed to these positive health outcomes. We do have infrastructure in place, uh, working to address many of the social determinants of health and our the subsequent health outcomes, and there is still work to do to address social determinants of health and reduce disparities in health outcomes amongst different populations. What is life expectancy and why do we care in public health? Uh, it's an estimate of how long a person can expect to live if current mortality rates don't change. It's an average. So some people will have a shorter life expectancy, where others will have a longer life expectancy compared to the this um county average. It can be used to evaluate the health status of a population, and that's why we care about it in public health, and to identify groups who are at risk of dying before we would expect. There is a limitation to it, however, that you have to really consider, and that life expectancy, unless there's something um extraordinary that happens, like COVID, uh, it doesn't significantly change um from year to year. So it's not a great measure uh to use for tracking short-term improvements. As of uh twenty twenty-three, the average life expectancy in San Mateo County is eighty-six years, and that is four years more than the California average, and approximately eight and a half years uh longer than the national average. And you can see here, um, where COVID happened, there were significant uh dips in life expectancy across California and the United States, but we actually did quite well in San Mateo County, and we're seeing um a a little bit of an uptrend in life expectancy as well. When we're looking at life expectancy and median household income, it becomes very clear that higher median household incomes, when we're looking at California counties, um plays a significant role in life expectancy, where we can see that San Mateo and Marin County routinely um have the highest life expectancies in California, and we also have the highest median household incomes. When we delve below the surface and look at the life expectancy of different populations in San Mateo County, uh, we do see that there are clear differences in life expectancy um that's, you know, evidenced by the seven-point-six-year difference uh between populations with the highest and the lowest life expectancy here. And we see as much as a fourteen-year difference in life expectancy uh across the cities, and depending on which city you reside in. So this is the framework for how we can improve uh upon the health outcomes, such as life expectancy in in the county. So our health is influenced by the social, the economic, and physical conditions we are exposed to day-to-day and across our lifespan, and those are, you know, called the social determinants of health or social drivers of health. And they then influence our environment that we live in, our lifestyle and behaviors, and then subsequently our health outcomes. And where we really want to be is implementing policies, initiatives, legislation, and programs that are affecting our social determinants of health, because that's where we get the long-term and um sustainable changes and improvements in uh our health outcomes. So we wanted to take a look, since social determinants of health are so integral to shaping the health of a community, a population, and the county, uh, what do we have in place in San Mateo County to address social determinants of health? And we know that these lists are not all-inclusive by any means, however, we do think this is a good snapshot of what kind of infrastructure we have. Neighborhood characteristics um have significant effects on health outcomes, because they influence an individual's ability to adopt behaviors that promote health. And so when we took a look, we do have a lot of um things in place to address our neighborhood and physical environments, which we were we were happy to see. One of our basic needs is accessible, affordable, and nutritious foods, and we also have programs um to address those needs. Education and health correspond closely, and uh they impact each other, it goes both ways, and educational attainment, the higher the educational attainment consistently shows that you have a lower risk of a wide array of illnesses and a longer life expectancy. And again, um, we did see that there are many programs in place to address this. Economic well-being is probably the most critical determinant of health, and living living in poverty is associated with worse health outcomes, whereas having a higher income is definitely associated with better health outcomes and longer life expectancy. And especially over the last few years, uh, the county has really made great strides in um trying to shore up our economic stability and economic mobility. Community and social connection are also very important in our health and well-being, and we have, I think, done a great job of trying to make this county a welcoming place, decrease loneliness, increase social connections. And finally, accessible, affordable, and high-quality healthcare is integral to meeting our health needs, and the county has really uh invested quite a bit in ensuring that most people in this county have some form of health coverage to the best of our ability, and then also improving and increasing the number of providers that we have. So once, after we took a look at all of these initiatives, we wanted to see, take a look and review our own community health assessment, um, national reports such as the U.S. News and World Report Healthiest Communities and the Robert Wood Johnson County Health Rankings, to see, okay, when we are looking at other communities, cities and counties across the nation, that are have comparable health outcomes or even better, where are some opportunities or additional, uh, you know, improvements that we could make? So we started to see some common themes uh across these reports. One, um, there's a high housing cost. This is not a surprise to anybody. It's difficult to get into the housing market here, to stay in the housing market here, and even rents are high. A large percentage of each paycheck is spent on housing, we have overcrowded housing, and there's a lack of diversity within our neighborhoods. There, uh, we have food insecurity and access to food, healthy food remains an issue in San Mateo County, especially in certain populations. We have disparities in meeting learning standards amongst different populations and disparities in educational attainment. Again, we're seeing this uh theme of very high cost of housing, the wages not necessarily meeting the needs of the people that live here, the high cost of childcare, and an increasing number of residents uh considering relocating due to the cost of living. When asked, residents do um state that they feel a lack of social connection and some level of isolation, and uh when we look at our healthcare system, even though we've made great strides, and I think increasing the number of providers, there's still not enough dentists and primary care physicians for um our population size. Residents are telling us that they do have a lack of physical activity, there's a perceived lack of access and care, and there's an increasing percentage of adults reporting fair to poor physical and mental health and experiencing depression. So again, to bring it back to the summary, overall, the health outcomes in San Mateo County are quite good. Uh, I think the investments and the resources that have gone into um improving our health outcomes and social determinants of health have generally um contributed to our positive health outcomes. We do have great infrastructure in place, however, there is still work to do, and we will really need to focus on some of the gaps that have been identified in social determinants of health to reduce disparities and get everyone in our population to meeting uh the health goals that we have. So the recommendations that we came up with based on uh the research that we've done and um reviewing what's here in the county is to, one, utilize and potentially expand upon existing infrastructure. We have great framework and groundwork already in place. Maybe we can amplify what we already have, and I think it's difficult to choose, okay, well, which social determinative health should we start with, or should we work with first? I think we actually need to be working in all of them, but if you had to choose, it would probably be the economic stability and education, because those will cross over into nutrition, um, where you can live, whether or not you can afford to live here, and things like that. And I mean, the big lift is a great example, they're already trying to reduce disparities in third-grade literacy rates. All right, after that goal is met, how can we continue to to expand that so that we are reducing the disparities in educational attainment and meeting standards, educational standards? Another good example is our Shared Prosperity Coordinating Council and their action plan that they are starting to rev up with, where their focus really is to um ensure some economic stability and economic mobility within the county, so that hopefully people can afford to live here and then hopefully get into the housing market and afford all of the other things like healthcare access and things like that. Um, we want to encourage participation in a of a wide variety of interested parties in the Community Health Improvement Plan Advisory Council. So in twenty twenty-three, uh, we completed our community health assessment and then developed a community health improvement plan, and which took input from the community and a lot of our county partners to develop and come up with three priorities to address. One was healthcare access, two was social determinants of health, and three, mental health. So this, you know, participating in this um advisory council is a i- is a way to collectively provide input into improving social determinants of health in this county. And then finally, we want to promote a a health-in-all policies strategy. This is a collaborative approach to improving the health of all people by incorporating health considerations into decision-making across sector and policy areas. And I think, you know, we do this for the most part, we try to do this in San Mateo County, this is just giving it a name and a strategy that we can kind of all get behind, because, I mean, it is, there's a recognition that public health practitioners have to, they must uh work with partners in many realms that affect social determinants of health, which are largely, you know, outside the purview of public health agencies. So how do we, you know, work with others and things that, you know, are an intersection between what they're doing, like planning, and and health outcomes in in the San Mateo County? So with that, uh, that's the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Are there uh any any questions? Supervisor Spear.
Uh, I just have a comment. I think it's pretty remarkable that we've gone from seventeen percent to five percent uninsured in San Mateo County. That that is like remarkable, and I give you credit and everyone associated um with that effort, because um that speaks volumes about our commitment. Now, we had a couple of speakers earlier today um that are promoting a public health myth that somehow um vaccinations are unsafe and cause death. What are you doing in terms of dispelling those kinds of myths that have become much more uh profound uh with the present Secretary of Health and Human Services?
Yes, uh, good, thank you, Supervisor Spear. We're working with our community organizations and the trusted messengers in the in the community to get the information out that vaccines are safe, uh, the COVID vaccine is safe, um, the reporting that has um that you do into the the VAERS system that has been mentioned by the two previous speakers, anybody can report into that. There's nobody reviewing it, there's nobody saying, yes, that's true, there's, you know, correlations being um found between vaccines and and any of the adverse events. So um we are really trying to get the word out through the people who are trusted in the community that these vaccines are safe, we still recommend them, and they still protect your health.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
I don't have a question, but just another comment. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I had the opportunity to sit on the panel or talk to Dr. Deborah Cotto from Stanford on longevity and the work they're looking at, that there's um eventually there'll be no reason that people won't live beyond a hundred years, even in our region as well, but it had a lot to do with what you eat, how you move, how you exercise, and um would love to share that information as well. Just getting people up to walk a little faster can help with balance and and those things as well. So again, thank you for this presentation. Longevity and life expectancy is so important um to our region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Could you um give us, can you show us the county uh map again that you um had put forth?
I'm not sure, can I go back?
While you're doing that, I just, I want to say thank you for the work. I'm in um support of advancing uh the recommendations uh and moving this forward. But I I think the map tells a very interesting story. So you you had said something about life expectancy, and what is that number again? In just in in San Mateo County?
The average uh life expectancy as of twenty twenty-three was eighty-six years.
Eighty-six years old. Can you talk a little bit about the contrast uh between East Powell, I guess Half Moon Bay is the is the coast, and then and then Daly City? Um, what do you speculate the the variance from? I know there's a lot of um factors, but that's a, that's a wide gap. I mean, that's a pretty significant gap, and we're in the same county, right?
We are. Um, you're right, there is a pretty wide gap there. I think what we're going to have to do is look at, again, the social determinants of health in those cities compared to other cities. What's at play, and what would need to be addressed to get us all, um, every city to the same life expectancy, whatever our goal is, if it's a hundred years, if it's getting to ninety years, how do we get everyone there, and what's that going to take in these different areas? And I also think we need to delve a little further down out of just the city air, you know, level, to maybe zip codes and census tracts, so that we can, you know, get a little more granular and see where we need to focus um more of those, you know, efforts, looking at the social determinants of health, because this is, again, an average across Half Moon Bay. It doesn't mean that everyone in Half Moon Bay uh has, you know, seventy-five-point-eight to eighty-one-point-three-year life expectancy, so maybe it's a certain, you know, zip code, maybe it's a certain census tract, and that's probably going to be a little more useful than just looking at the city level. But you're right, we we need to delve a little further into what's at play.
I find it fascinating, the work, because it truly is in certain areas, this is your data, not me saying it, um, it's it's the tale of two counties, right? I mean, you have this number of eighty-six, right? Then we're looking at these numbers, and there, the the variants, i- 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 it amazes me, I understand, someone had said to earlier today that we're the second wealthiest county um in the United States. I know we have, and that's fine, I I I celebrate people's successes. We have about eighty-seven billionaires who live in the ca- live in the county. I think that is tremendous. You know, that being said, though, what the story does, and 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 the data is important, and we're going to continue to 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 work in this area, is that that sort of um equity, there are certain areas that have not been really addressed in terms of uh needs. Let me just share a story with you, I think it's an important story, it's in my district. Uh, one of the lowest census tracts in San Mateo County, or the lowest census tract, um, is in my district, it's in the in the Bay Shore area. Um, and so this at one time, um, I served on the Daly City Council, this was an area that really, there was no grocery store, really just no, no resources. It's sort of by the, well, it is, not sort of, it's at the San Francisco border, but really less resourced. Now, we're looking at doing, the county's looking at doing additional four hundred units of housing there, um, there's a new school. But to me, what your presentation shows is that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I've always said this from the beginning, that regardless of what zip code you come from, we should have, people should have access, and so they should have access to resources, we should do everything we can as policymakers to leave no one behind. You talked about food insecurity, you talked about all these these issues, and so what my hope is through this work, whether you live in Hillsborough, Woodside, or Atherton, or whether you live in San Mateo, Daly City, East Powell, or North Central San Mateo, that you have the same opportunity and you have the same resources. So I want to applaud you, I want to applaud um uh Director, CEO Chala in um in this work, and there's a lot that needs to be done. What are the next steps? You'd 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 outline the recommendation, you had talked a little bit about something that is intriguing to me, but really looking at um sort of as we do with our our budget, or, you know, as we prove items through our agenda, looking at it with a um equity lens. You talked a little about potentially looking at it with a a health, health lens. What is, what is the future of this work in your eyes?
I'm hoping that, you know, kind of based on the recommendations, and again, I think that we do this, um, I I know people in health are always working with someone in County Office of Ed and and um sustainability and different departments, certainly human services, uh, all these, you know, different agencies and departments, but- all these different agencies and departments, but really, again, making that a strategy for the county, that we are going to consider the health implications of policies and programs and processes and things that we are trying to, to move forward. What are the health, potential health effects? How do they affect the social determinants of health? Are there any unintended consequences of some of the decisions that we're making on social determinants of health and things like that so that we are, you know, together kind of moving this, it's at the forefront of everyone's, everyone's mind? So we're going to keep doing our work and working with as many departments and agencies as we can and letting them know that we're out there. We can, you know, be a sounding board when you're putting plans together and coming up with things, you know, what are, what are the health, potential health impacts of, of what you're, you're planning? We're here to do that. Well, I guess I'm voluntary myself, I'm not sure I can volunteer the whole health, the health department, but, um, you know, using that health and all policies strategy. And then also, again, I think this advisory council that's going to be formed, I believe it's in the fall, is going to be a great way for supervisors or, or other, you know, interested parties to really be in the discussion and drive some of the, you know, the input and how we're moving on social determinants of health in the county. And so I think that's another, another great way to do it. And we have a lot, and I'm repeating myself, but we have a lot of great programs and things in place already. And then how can we kind of supersize them and, and make them even, you know, go even further and address some of these gaps? So we're going to continue doing that. Wherever we're at, we'll be, you know, promoting all of those things. And we're just hoping that this board and, and the county as a whole would want to, you know, kind of support that.
Yeah, before I, I take, get it over to Supervisor Spear, I just want to say this. I mean, we've made some great strides. I know, you know, I no longer sit on the health plan of San Mateo, but we talk about dental integration, we talk about some of the innovation that has occurred in, in that department. Like you said, what, what's interesting is there's a lot of this work that we built, built on, whether it's the big lift. I think as we move forward, and I think this is where you're going with this, is, is the coordination, I think, is going to be extremely, extremely important, not even cross-departmentally, but I think just amongst different providers and whatever area, areas they may be. And so I, I think the, the coordination and, and how we do this is really going to be important. And my hope, and once we're able to, to do this, and you, like you've said, you know, the, the metric of a year over a year, that's, you know, that, that's probably not, not feasible. However, if we are able to look at the work and advance the work over a period of five to 10 years, to me, that provides us a solid baseline, really trying to see what we can do, and it's aspirational in many ways, but really seeing what we can do to make sure that life expectancy is spread equally in San Mateo County. Finally, 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 I'd like to challenge you on a data point that I think would be helpful. You had said that there are people, and I, I've seen, I've seen this, just personal experience, I don't have the data to back it up, that people are moving out of San Mateo County because of the affordability issue. I'd like to understand in more detail what the data reflects, because I've seen it personally. I've been in this county for 49 years, I've lived here, and I've seen friends have to move away, I've seen community members have to wa, move away because they just can't afford to live here. But to really understand that data piece would be, would be critical. Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, knowledge is power. That map in and of itself, if it was shown at the Council of Cities meeting, maybe as you presented to them, could really instill a commitment among our city councils to, particularly the ones that are dark blue, to look at ways to enhance health, and they would probably look to you for suggestions in those communities. But I think we should share this.
Yes.
So maybe we can arrange for you to make that presentation before the Council of Cities.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this is a very good point that Supervisor Spear brings up. You know, the, the county handles, we, we have the county hospital, we also have, you know, Supervisor Spear and I, or the North County Health Clinic. We are sort of the backbone of health. But that being said, I do think we need to have conversations with, with council members, get input from them, and to see, look, the work that we've done, where do they see potential expansions? And I think that sort of conversation is going to be healthy. And I'd love to go with you to the Council of Cities to explain this. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful idea, and Supervisor Corso as well. I don't think that's a Brown Act violation, I think that's informational. Is that correct, County Attorney Niblin?
It's correct, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, John. And so with that, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. No public comments from chambers for this item, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for Item 5 for the Presentation on Life Expectancy in San Mateo County. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate this presentation. It is information only, no action is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, just so the record reflects, it's 11:37. I think we'll break here to take closed session, if it's okay with you Supervisor Spear. 12:30 is okay? All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move to matters for, set for a specific time. We'll start with Item 6. We will be conducting a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA, regarding the issuance of tax exempt bonds by the California Enterprise Development Authority. I believe the county attorney will help us with this item. TEFRA.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually going to read some comments here because the TEFRA statute is pretty specific about, you know, sort of what, what's transpiring. I want to make sure I don't miss anything. So I'm going to note that we're here this morning to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA, as, as the Board President's noted it's called. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held in the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax exempt financing is located, and it requires that the governing body approve the proposed financing. Crystal Springs Uplands School, a nonprofit public benefit corporation or a related entity, an entity related to the, to the school, we're going to call that the borrower for, for purposes of this item, has asked that the California Enterprise Development Authority be the issuer of tax exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $35 million. The bonds are to be used to finance and refinance and/or reimburse the borrower for the cost of the construction, improvement, equipping and furnishing of the real property and improvements located at 400 Uplands Drive in Hillsborough, in an amount not to exceed $33 million, and at 10 Davis Drive in Belmont, in an amount not to exceed $2 million. Those are collectively called the facilities. And for paying capitalized interest in certain costs of issuance in connection with the issuance of these bonds. The authority is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the authority will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the county will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the county. The county will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. After this hearing, it's recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the authority for the benefit of the borrower. The adoption is solely for the purpose, the adoption that we're talking about here is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the Internal Revenue Code, and the California Government Code at Section 6500 et sec. Representatives from the borrower and the authority are available for any questions, should the board have them.
Great, thank you very much. With that, colleagues, with unanimous consent, can we now open the public hearing? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Could I ask the clerk to please see if anyone wishes to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, if you wish to comment on item, please come up. Okay, I don't see anyone coming up or no speaker's lips, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand. This is public hearing for Item 6, TEFRA Hearing on Bonds for California Enterprise Development Authority. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If, if that is all the speakers, I will now ask for unanimous consent to close the public hearing. Do I have that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions for my colleagues? If not, Supervisor Spear, would you wish to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the issuance?
So moved.
So moved. Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Kenapa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes, Supervisor Corso being absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to Item 7 also, which is another public hearing under the Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA, regarding the issuance of tax exempt bonds by the California State Communities Development Authority. I believe the county attorney will help us with this item. Mr. Niblin?
Thank you, yes, we'll go ahead and handle this one as well. And, and again, as noted, this is a TEFRA item in a public hearing pursuant to TEFRA, which again, requires that a public hearing be held in the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. Sequoia Living, Inc., a nonprofit public benefit corporation, again, called the borrower here, has asked that the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, which, again, we'll call the authority today, will be the, be the issuer of tax exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $165 million, including a portion of that amount in an amount not to exceed $65 million for the purposes of financing and/or refinancing the acquisition, construction, renovation, equipping, and furnishing of capital projects at the Sequoias at Portola Valley. The Sequoias provide senior residential and care services and are located generally at 501 Portola Road in Portola Valley. The authority is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the authority will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the county will have no financial or legal obligation or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the county. The county will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. After this hearing, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the authority for the benefit of the borrower. Adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the Internal Revenue Code, and the California Government Code at Section 6500 et sec. Representatives from the borrower and the authority, again, are available for any questions, should the board have any.
Thank you very much. With unanimous consent, will we now open the public hearing? Seeing I have unanimous consent, can we open the public hearing, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker's slips or speakers from chambers for Item Number 7, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public on Zoom, please click raise hand for this public hearing, Item 7, TEFRA Hearing on Bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. Final call, public hearing item 7.
I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any other comments or questions for my colleagues? If not, Supervisor Mueller, would you wish to make a motion? All right, Supervisor Mueller moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller? Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Kenapa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes, Supervisor Corso being absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to Item 8, also set, acting as the governing board of the 10 county sewer maintenance and sanitation districts, will conduct a public hearing related to sewer service charges. I believe that our Public Works Director will help us on this issue, Ms. Stillman.
Good morning, President Kenapa, honorable members of the board, Mr. Caliki, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Niblin. I have a very quick presentation. Okay, so the subject before you is the fiscal year '25, '26 sewer service charges. Next up is just a map that shows the various 10 sewer and sanitation districts that we operate, and you can see they're located in different areas of the county, and they're definitely of different sizes as well. In the past, your board has approved sewer rates for eight of the 10 districts in 2023, and last year, two of the districts. These have been for various fiscal years, for five fiscal years, for eight of the districts, and two fiscal years for the other two districts last year. These are the rates that have been approved that show this next fiscal year's rates, as well as the following two fiscal years. Those are the rates that are adopted for the various sewer districts, and the charges in front of you today will be based on those particular rates. The process is to schedule a public hearing, which was done by your board on May 6th. Today is the public hearing, in which you consider the filing and the approval of the sewer service charges report based on the rates that were previously adopted, consider any objections or protest during the public hearing, and adopt the sewer service charges report. And that concludes my presentation. And available for any questions.
Great, any questions for Ms. Stillman? Seeing no questions for Ms. Stillman with unanimous consent, we'll now open the public hearing. Seeing I have unanimous consent, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speaker, chamber, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for Item 8, Public Hearing on the 10 County Sewer Maintenance and Sanitation Districts. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Move we close the public hearing.
Thank you so much Supervisor Spear. The public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion on this item?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Kenapa?
Yes.
Your motion passes, Supervisor Corso being absent.
Great, that'll bring us to Item 9, acting as the governing board of County Service Area Number 1, we are conducting a public hearing to set the rate of the special parcel tax for extended police and structural fire services in County Service Area Number 1 for FY '25-'26 at $65 per item, per parcel, excuse me. This item is brought to us by Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual setting of the tax rate for the special parcel tax to help fund police and fire services in County Service Area 1. The special parcel tax was approved by voters in CSA 1 on the ballot of the March 5th, 2024 election by 87.80%. It has been approved by voters for several years since, 1982. The purpose of this annual public hearing is to set the actual amount of the special parcel tax for '25-'26 year. It's proposed the rate be set at $65 per parcel, as it has been for many years. The office has communicated with Highlands Community Association on this matter, and it is in support of renewing the tax.
Great, thank you very much. Do I have a, a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved.
Thank you. A motion, we will go through unanimous consent to a public hearing. Do we have any public comments, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Public hearing has been opened. I don't have any speaker's slips for this item, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for Public Hearing, Item Number 9 on County Service Area Number 1. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I'll ask for unanimous consent, seeing I have unanimous consent, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Spear?
I move adoption.
All right, second, roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Kenapa?
Yes.
Motion passes, Supervisor Corso being absent.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, as you know, Item 10 on our agenda is an item set for a specified time, specifically the presentation of service awards. This item is set for 3:00 PM at the Regional Operations Center. We look forward to honoring our colleagues and county employees this afternoon. We are now on to Item 11 of the Regular General. We'll start with Item 11, which is the Resolution to Approve the Rehiring of San Mateo Medical Center Chief Financial Officer, David McGrew. Colleen, good morning.
Good morning, President Kenapa, Supervisors, and County Administrator. I'm seeking your approval to hire San Mateo Medical Center Chief Financial Officer, David McGrew, in an extra help capacity, and to allow the appointment into that position before Mr. McGrew's post-retirement 180-day separation period expires. Mr. McGrew joined San Mateo County Health in 2014 as the Chief Financial Officer at the medical center, and a year ago, following the departure of our department's Chief Information Officer, was, took on the interim responsibility of CIO. To accommodate this interim role, Mr. McGrew's CFO position was double-filled to afford internal candidates the opportunity to undertake the assignment of interim CFO at the medical center. After an extensive recruitment effort, San Mateo County Health recently completed our recruitment for the new CIO and selected a well-qualified internal candidate, Rich Bailey, who will begin in the position on June 22nd. The recruitment for a successor CFO for the medical center has been underway and underway. for a successor CFO for the medical center has been underway, and a successful candidate was recently selected. Mr. McGrew announced his retirement from his permanent CFO position effective July 8, 2025. Mr. McGrew's experience and contributions have been invaluable in his performance of both the department CIO and the medical center CFO roles. The CFO plays a vital role in the medical center's executive leadership structure, overseeing the medical center's enterprise fund, budget, and operational planning, and directing the critical annual financial statement audit. The department CIO has primary accountability for planning, organizing, and executing strategic and operational initiatives to implement and maintain all software applications used by San Mateo County Health clinical and operational teams, including implementation of the Epic Electronic Health Record. Mr. McGrew's more than 30 years of experience, the last 11 of which have been with San Mateo County Health, cannot be replicated, and to enable seamless knowledge transfer and the onboarding of our newly-selected CIO and medical center CFO, Mr. McGrew's assistance and expertise is needed prior to the expiration of his 180-day separation period. So for these reasons, I'm asking for your support in this item.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Can we have public comment, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speakers for item number 11, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click Raise Hand for item 11, Extra Help Position Pursuant to Government Code Section 7522.56. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right. Can I have a motion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear? Thank you, Supervisor Mueller. Thank you, Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. Supervisor Corzo being absent.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is item 12, from County Health, which is a resolution to authorize an agreement with CAMNR for housing and housing-related mental health services for the term of June 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027, in the amount not to exceed $15,290,000 and $396,000, $290,000 and $396,000. Okay, go. Think I might have messed that up, Dr. J. Go ahead.
Good morning, President Canepa, Honorable Board of Supervisors, County Execs and Community, Jay Africa, Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. The item again in front of you is a two-year agreement for CAMNR to provide housing and housing-related mental health services in our county. So CAMNR has been a longstanding provider of all these services since 1964, and have provided a continuum of services in our county. Specifically, I want to highlight two of their programs, the Transitional Residential Program, treatment at the Eucalyptus House and Hawthorne House, which provides social rehabilitation programs for many behavioral health clients. Occupancy rate over the last, in 2023, had been 63% to 66%. They have 12 beds each, and in 2023, 24%, and usually clients stay there at least between about four to seven months. So it's really long-term getting all the services. In their new ventures program, which provides intensive case management to clients who have severe mental health conditions, they've served about 220 clients over the past year, and really provide a variety of services that relate for, in clients' wellness and recovery. And then the supported education focuses on connecting individuals, both adults and youth, to educational and vocational services. And with their youth, young adults' independent living program, they serve about, with adults, about 100 clients in the job plus. And I want to just make sure that you also knew that connecting young people to provide educational supports have really gotten good results. The cohort GPA is at 3.2, and also retention rates, many of the young people have stayed in school at about 81%. So just wanted to make sure that.
Okay. Do we have any comments for the members? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers for item number 12, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click Raise Hand for item 12, the CAMNR Agreement. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion? Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear is absent. Supervisor Mueller? Thank you, Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passed, with Supervisors Corzo and Spear being absent.
Thank you, Dr. J. That brings us to item 13, from the Human Service ANG, which is a resolution to authorize the agreements to provide core services. Clerk, on the hand.
Good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisors. I am pleased to provide an overview of the item before you, which would approve new three-year contracts with seven core service agencies that are located throughout the county. As you know, HSA Center on Homelessness plans, funds, and monitors the county's homeless and safety net system, ensuring that services are equitable, accessible, responsive, and aligned. The core service agencies serve as the front door to the system, enabling the county's most vulnerable residents to access the help that they need. In fiscal year 2324, the core agencies served 53,519 individuals and provided 321,887 units of service, which translates to six services per person on average. The Human Services Agency conducted a request for proposals process earlier this year, and we recommend funding for all applicants. These contracts would fund a range of core services provided by each agency, including case management, referrals to benefits and other resources, emergency food, and access to the coordinated entry system for residents experiencing homelessness. The contracts are 100% funded with net county costs, and each core agency leverages additional funding and resources to meet the unique needs of the communities that they serve. Critically, the core service agencies administer the county's over $3 million investment in emergency financial assistance. These emergency funds pay for rent and other essential needs to prevent homelessness and ensure stability. When crises occur, such as the COVID-19 pandemic, the mass shooting in Half Moon Bay, or wildfires, just to name a few recent examples, the core's infrastructure allows the county to address emerging needs without having to develop new systems. This flexible and efficient partnership will be especially important as we navigate significant policy changes and funding cuts to the social safety net. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the core agency contracts.
Thank you so much. Any comments for members? Seeing none, we go.
I just have a brief question, just not on this contract. I just want to acknowledge you in public of the work that you do and your organization. We just recently went on a trip to look at a center in San Diego, and my district received a report where there was a constituent who couldn't receive Medicaid for some much-needed medical services. You took that on, and within the next day, that issue was resolved, and this lady is looking at potential breast cancer. But the fact that your organization stepped up, and you really put the human and human services to make sure that our residents are taken care of, so hats off to you. You and your team deserve congratulations and a lot of kudos on the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Great. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have eight speakers from chambers. We'll start with Judith Guerrero.
All right. What we're going to do, we're going to limit the comments to about 30 seconds, okay, on this item, okay?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Followed by Latrice Taylor.
Okay, I'll be quick. Good morning, President Canepa, and honorable supervisors and county staff. My name is Judith Guerrero. I'm the Executive Director of the Core Agency that provides services to the mid-coast, and I just wanted to share with you how many people we have served this year. So far, we have served 5,047 individuals that represent 2,165 households. Of the people that we serve, 31% live in households with children, 25% are minors, and 20% are farm workers. These numbers represent the community that we serve and the commitment that Cosite hopes has to continue to serve this community in partnership with San Mateo County and the rest of the core agencies. Thank you.
Thanks, Judith.
Thank you. Latrice Taylor, followed by Alida Sobalvaro.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Latrice Taylor, Senior Director of Programs and Services with Samaritan House, and we wanted to say thank you so much for all the support you've provided to us in the past. This past fiscal year, we have served 29,000 residents, provided over 20,000 articles, items of clothing for children and youth, and over 8,000 free patient visits, as well as 4.9 million meal equivalents to our residents. We could not be done without you. We thank you so very much.
Thank you. Alida Sobalvaro, followed by Mike Stensel.
Hi. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Alida Valencia Sobalvaro, Director of the YMCA Community Research Center, serving South City, Seminole, and Brisbane. Just wanted to share some numbers with you that impact real families, real households. In fiscal year 2324, we served 3,356 households, about 8,100 unduplicated individuals, and included 140,400 units of service, and we are going to reach similar numbers this fiscal year. And just thank you for your support in continuing our program and our help with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Stensel, followed by Laura Burt.
Hello, Board and Staff. I'm Mike Stensel, Executive Director of Daily City Partnership. Just wanted to reiterate, thank you so much for the support. Daily City Partnership served over 16,000 unduplicated services last year and 600,000 touches. This money and contract is really needed during this time, especially during mass deportations and all of the uncertainty in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Burt. Laura, and then Anita Reese. Sure. Anita, go ahead.
Thanks so much. Anita Reese, I'm the Executive Director of the Pacifica Resource Center, a current core agency of San Mateo County. I want to start by thanking the County of San Mateo for 50 years of partnership to promote, to provide, gosh, critical safety net services. I thought I didn't need my glasses, through PRC in Pacifica. So far this year, PRC has provided over 151,000 units of service to one in five Pacifica families, which on average is 97 units of service for each Pacifica family PRC serves. The breadth of our work is possible in part because of the support you all provide. Thank you so much for this, for support this year, hopefully, and for the past 50 years.
Okay. Thank you. Rita Mancera, followed by Laura Burt.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Rita Mancera, and I'm the Executive Director of Puente, serving the communities of Pescadero, La Jonda, Loma, Marenza, and Gregorio. I'm here to strongly advocate for the continued support of funding core services in our region. In the current fiscal year, Puente has served 1,471 unduplicated individuals in 731 households, including 289 farmworker households, and provided over 26,765 units of service. That's about 36 units per household. What sets our region apart is that our geographic isolation creates a significant barrier to accessing essential resources easily available in other parts of the county. And while our region is small in population, we believe that every person has the right to equitable access to health, education, and economic security. Lastly, San Mateo County contributes 19% of the total cost to provide core services in our region, and the rest comes from foundations and individual donors. So we urge you to please approve this core funding presented today. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Burt, followed by our last speaker from chambers, Liz Lang.
Good morning, everyone, or good afternoon at this point. Thanks for having us here. I want to say thank you for your commitment to the core agency network and your dedication to serving over 53,000 very low-income individuals will collectively be supported by seven agencies as recommended by Claire earlier, as you know, and has been reaffirmed in recent emergency situations such as the pandemic, fires, floods, and more. Together, we are stronger. Our network of nonprofit agencies unites expertise, resources, and financial support to create a long, a lasting impact. By pooling knowledge, coordinating efforts, and leveraging fiscal strength, we amplify our ability to serve communities more effectively. Through shared resources and strategic collaboration, we ensure sustainability, efficiency, and innovation in addressing critical needs. When nonprofits work together, we don't just support each other, we elevate the entire community. So again, thank you for your leadership and support.
Thank you. Liz Lang? Liz is not present. Okay, that's end of public comment from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Thank you. This is for item number 13, and we do have Liz Lang on Zoom. Liz, please unmute and begin.
Hello, my name is Liz Lang, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Fair Oaks Community Center, which provides safety net services to Redwood City, North Fair Oaks, Portola Valley, Woodside, and Atherton. Fair Oaks has served the community for 50 years, and from July 2024 to March 2025, we served 6,200 residents, provided referrals to 2,400 households, distributed food to 867 households, and provided emergency financial assistance to 233 households. We operated daily homeless help staff, serving an average of 245 individuals monthly. Hosted dignity on wheels, which provides shower and laundry to 25 individuals, 2,500 individuals since July 2024. And lastly, Fair Oaks helps lead the OYE Latinx Youth Conference now in its 13th year, which welcomes 675 attendees exploring Latinx identity and culture. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Liz. No further comments, Mr. President.
Great. Can I have a motion on this item for adoption? All right. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller. Thank you, Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Before I say yes, I just really want to thank our core agencies. Without your work, a lot of the work in San Mateo County would not get done. So thank you, thank you, thank you. So yes.
Thank you. Motion passed, with Supervisor Corzo being absent.
All right. We'll move on to item 14, on the next regular agenda item. A public hearing in compliance with Government Code Section 3502.3 regarding the county of San Mateo's vacancies and recruitment and retention strategies. This item comes from Human Resources.
And we do have a presentation. Good afternoon, President, members of the board, Mr. Calagi, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez. I'm Rosio Kirkson, and I have the honor to serve as the county's HR Director. I'm pleased to join you today to provide an overview on the county's staffing vacancies and recruitment and retention strategies in alignment with recently passed legislation, Assembly Bill 2561. AB 2561 was introduced to address staffing vacancies in public agencies across the state. It became law in January 2025. It requires public agencies to hold an annual hearing regarding vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts, and if there are any bargaining units that have vacancies above 20%, there are additional reporting requirements. And lastly, it does allow for recognized employee unions to present at the hearing. And this morning, I believe we have two of our labor partners here today. Before going into the data and strategies, I want to share some information about the county's workforce. As your board is aware, we have approximately 6,000 regular positions, over 5,300 are filled. The average age of our workforce is 44 years. The average years of service is 9.7 years, which has decreased in recent years, and nearly 56% of all employees live in the county. We collaborate with county departments to recruit, hire, develop, and retain top talent. Annually, we conduct over 500 recruitments, receive over 20,000 applications, and hire over 400 employees. We also continue to have a strong promotion rate in keeping with our strategy of growing our own. During the last year, 65% of management positions were filled by internal candidates, and 50% of non-management positions were filled by internal candidates. Our employee turnover rate is trending in the right direction, ranging from five, excuse me, 9% to 10%. We have made progress. We have made progress in our efforts to fill vacant positions and retain a skilled, diverse, and engaged workforce. There has been a reduction in the overall vacancy rate, as you will note, from a high of 14% in fiscal year 2023 to the current 11%. This slide shows the vacancy rate for our 11 recognized employee unions, as well as our three unrepresented groups. You'll note that most of the You'll note that most of the groups are close or under the countywide average, although you'll also note that there is one labor group, Probation Detention Association, PDA, that is significantly above the 20%. This chart reflects the vacancy rate by bargaining units. Most of our employee unions have just one bargaining unit. However, with ASME, they have 11 bargaining units, and SEIU has five bargaining units, which is broken down in this slide. And this document is also included in your Board's packet. When we look at the breakdown of the bargaining units that have vacancy rates at or above 20%, these are the three areas. And I'll start with ASME, professional clinical lab scientist. There, you see a vacancy rate of 20%. There are only four vacancies. And as of today, there are two vacancies. When we ran this report in April, on April 30, there were four, and now there are two. So we are making some progress. And this is a hard-to-recruit position, not just for us, but on a national level. There is a workforce shortage, given the limited number of accredited clinical lab science programs. And since we implemented hiring incentives, we have seen an increase in applicants as well as hires. So again, we have two vacancies as of today. And with our SEIU Engineering Bargaining Group, this, there's a vacancy rate of 25% to vacancies. So again, a small number. And with both of these vacancies, we do anticipate making hires in the very near future. There's a construction inspector where a job offer has been made, and so again, we'll fill that soon. And then with the Real Property Agent, we recently closed the recruitment and are working, and we're working with the hiring manager to fill that position. And now we get to PDA. And so the vacancies here are probation officers and group supervisors. And you'll note that we have 80 vacancies out of 164 positions. And of those, 37 are probation officers, vacancies, and 43 are group supervisors. The department has been taking a strategic approach to hiring based on the evolving environment. They have been closely analyzing their vacancies as the work is constantly shifting because of legislative changes, such as AB 1950 that limits the length of probation, which has reduced caseloads for deputy probation officers. Although, at the same time, there is a need to maintain vacancies to allow for additional hiring needs as there are upcoming requirements to increase the staffing ratios in the Youth Services Center. And I should also note that we do have two recruitments that are continuous for both the deputy probation officer as well as the group supervisor. And we have been making hires there. The department has been making hires. And we also enhanced our marketing efforts to include digital billboards, video content of probation staff to showcase the meaningful impact of their work, and then also targeted applicant sourcing and outreach. Other areas where we are experiencing recruitment and retention challenges are with our traditional, traditionally hard-to-recruit positions, such as social workers, healthcare professionals, and stationary engineers. The reasons for this are due to national and regional labor shortages in these areas. We're also seeing some challenges as a result of the Bay Area's high cost of living, limited affordable housing, which result in longer commutes for employees that live outside the county. And lastly, we are seeing an evolving shift in our work environment and expectations, such as the desire for more work-life integration. To address these challenges, we have worked to make San Mateo County employment more accessible. We focus on skills, not degrees. We are revamping our job requirements and offering skills-based hiring training for all of our hiring managers. We are streamlining processes and leveraging technology to improve services and reduce hiring timelines. We're enhancing the candidate experience through increased engagement and communication, including candidate texting. And we're also collaborating with hiring managers, leading to innovative approaches to our hiring practices. With the launch of our Work With Purpose employer branding and campaigns, we are showcasing that working for the county means having a career with real purpose, where every job has a critical role in making an impact in the lives of the people we serve. We are hosting public service career fairs and recruitment events, as well as informational sessions and same-day hiring events. We're featuring employee spotlight campaigns. We are proactively sourcing candidates. To mitigate hiring challenges for our hard-to-fill positions, your Board approved hiring incentives that include hiring bonuses, sick leave and vacation, hours upon hire, relocation reimbursement, and an enhanced employee referral program, where employees can now earn $1,000 for referring successful candidates to our hard-to-fill recruitment positions. These incentives have had a positive impact on our hard-to-recruit positions, such as social workers. We are also continuing to grow the talent pipeline through our robust internship, fellowship programs, and exploring apprenticeships, trainee programs, as well as creating partnerships with community colleges and workforce development organizations. We know that employee retention is vital to our success. Thanks to your Board, we offer market-based salaries and are consistently evaluating them to ensure we remain competitive. And during the most recent negotiations, your Board approved an unprecedented package that included equity and cost of living adjustments, as well as additional holiday and wellness days. We offer robust and high-quality benefits program, and we offer work-life integration programs, such as flexible work practices, onsite childcare, tuition assistance, and through the Sustainability Department, commute alternative programs. We will continue to explore housing programs in addition to the county's home loan program and partnership with HIP Housing. We are taking a whole-person approach to employee well-being, focusing on physical, mental, financial, and social well-being. And we are also focusing on employee skills development and growth and offering programs at all levels of the organization. Lastly, we recognize employees for their outstanding contributions. We're expanding our culture of recognition through our various countywide programs and departmental initiatives. We have made progress in our efforts to fill vacant positions and retain our excellent workforce. Moving forward, we will continue to partner with our hiring departments and labor partners to monitor vacancies and deploy recruitment and retention strategies so that essential services are delivered to the county. I want to thank your Board, county executive, all of our employees, and our labor partners for making San Mateo County a great place to work. I'm happy to answer any questions now or following our labor partners' presentation. And as I mentioned, we have SEIU and ASME here, or I mentioned two labor partners, and they're both here.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Rosio? Seeing none, can we have public, can we open up the, with unanimous consent, can we open up the hearing? Seeing I have unanimous consent, any public comment?
Mr. President, do you want to take the SEIU presentation first before we do public comment?
Oh, you're doing a presentation? Okay, come on up, Mercedes.
Yes, it'll be SEIU, followed by ASME. Thank you.
Felipe, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mercedes.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. All right. Good afternoon, President Kanepa, members of the Board, and Mr. Calagui. My name is Mercedes Segura. I am the Chapter Chair for SEIU Local 521, representing over 2,000 county employees, dedicated to serving all residents of San Mateo County. As the union representing frontline workers across public and community services, SEIU Local 521 affirms the importance of vacancy hearings addressing chronic understaffing by ensuring accountability in workforce planning. These hearings provide a critical opportunity to evaluate the impact of vacancies on public services while demanding timely, equitable action from San Mateo County to fill these We're here because our communities depend on a stable, well-supported public workforce. And right now, that workforce is being stretched beyond its limits. Let's start with the numbers. At first glance, only the engineering unit is facing a high vacancy rate, namely 25%, which is part of legal remedy provided by AB 2561, which allows us to address the public and the Board of Supervisors. The vacancy rate in the SEIU engineering unit stands at 25%. These positions are not abstract. They directly support vital public infrastructure, construction oversight, and land management. When a quarter of the team is missing, services falter and pressure piles on remaining staff. However, when we look at vacancies by department, we see a vacancy rate higher than the overall SEIU vacancy rate of 11% in 10 departments. High job vacancies impact public service delivery and workers forced to handle heavier workloads. This understaffing often leads to burnout and increased turnover rates, which further exacerbate staffing challenges. Revenue generating departments, such as Real Property Services, Treasurer Tax Collector, are negatively impacted by a vacancy rate of 33% and 35%. This slide is an overview of the departments with some of the highest vacancy rates throughout the country, county. These are essential departments. In fact, more than a third of all current vacancies, 34%, have been unfilled for over a year. That's not just a delay, it's a systemic issue. These are not short-term gaps. They represent chronic understaffing that impacts services, increases burnout, and signals that the county is failing to prioritize filling critical roles. Leaving positions open for this long compromises services quality and pushes more work onto already overburdened staff. We need a timeline and accountability to ensure these roles are filled, not left empty as a hidden cost-cutting tactic. The turnover and retention rates are just as concerning. The median tenure is just 7.1 years, with a growing portion, almost 10%, having worked for less than a year. High turnover brings high costs, which ultimately fall on taxpayers and the county who in turn fund services. To compensate, the county increasingly relies on extra help, which is unsustainable and disruptive to continuity and quality of service. Excuse me. Why employees leave? Why are they leaving? The answer isn't mysterious. Workload and burnout. Lack of advancement and inflexible working conditions limit work options and frustrate employees unnecessarily. This is based on the Employee Engagement Service. Flexible working conditions was a top reason why people stay, and it is also a top reason why people leave. These are issues the county can and must address if we want to attract and retain talent for the long-term success and delivery of public services throughout San Mateo County. Our members continue to bear the burden of excessive workloads, leading to burnout, low morale, and service delays that harm the communities we serve due to unfilled The impacts ripple outward. We lose valuable experience and institutional knowledge. San Mateos County Brown is negatively impacted. Management must spend more time and resources on hiring and training. The county ends up spending more money on hiring, onboarding, and training just to replace someone. And the fallback options, like contract work or short-term hires, are more expensive and less effective in the long run. The county has the resources to fix this. The general fund balance is 2.5 billion, and 89% of that is unrestricted. In fact, the fund balance has grown by nearly 50% in the last five years. The money is there. What's needed is the will to invest in the people doing the work. So how do we fix this? We're calling for to breathe new life into San Mateo County Public Services for All. Fill the vacancies to fulfill the capacity and deliver essential public services to more community members. No resident should incur unnecessary delay as managers and workers contend with increased workloads and a reduced staff. Remove barriers in hiring and support your internal candidates. Create pathways to permanency for extra-help workers. Set clear, accountable timelines for posting and filling vacancies. Track and evaluate the hiring outcomes. We asked the county what recent applicants have given when declined positions, and they said they do not track that information. And involve frontline workers in hiring decisions. We know what it takes to succeed in these roles. Invest in training, mentorship, and advancement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mercedes, Felipe? I understand we have Ryan Shannon online, too. Is that correct, Felipe?
Yeah, Ryan's gonna just kind of give an overview of ASME. I'm just, I'm gonna speak mainly on children and family services. I want to thank the Board and the County Manager. My name is Felipe Donaire, and I'm the President of Local 829. I'm a social worker with children and family services, and I've worked for the department for over 25 years. I want to talk about the staffing shortages in children and family services. I work with young adults in foster care, as well as adolescents in foster care. I'm required to see my youth on a monthly basis, and I provide case management services to them. My job requires extensive travel to Selma, Stockton, Antioch, and out-of-state to Michigan. Given the staffing shortages, we are covering the front-end work, and we have to go out and investigate child abuse calls that come into our hotline. On top of that, we have to cover the on-call backup shifts for the overnight calls that come in. Recently, my coworker worked a regular day shift, and during the backup shift, the regular staff was out on an emergency, and another emergency call came in. She had to go out in the field. That day, she worked over 23 hours. These are examples that lead to burnout and create stress for many workers. Our agency has opened the social work position to bachelor-level social workers. We currently have a larger pool of social workers in our training unit. The concern is retaining social workers after they complete training. We have lost many social workers who complete training due to burnout or not passing probation. In the neighboring counties, they provide extra pay for these positions. For example, in San Francisco, they give 5% extra pay to intake staff who work doing the front-end work. All workers in Santa Clara County receive a 6% differential pay, and intake workers receive an extra 3% for a total of 9% pay. These pays are to address the staffing shortages in these counties. I know there are, there is a 15,000 bonus that social workers receive over three years, but that has not helped to retain staff. We have tried to address these issues in bargaining, but our proposals were rejected or not considered. I'm hoping the Board and the County Manager will take these issues seriously and address the staffing shortages in children and family services. Thank you for your time.
Great.
Thank you. And we do have Ryan Shannon online.
Good afternoon, members of the Board and CEO Calagui. My name is Ryan Shannon. I'm a union representative with ASME Council 57, representing Local 829. I'm here to speak regarding AB 2561 and to highlight the county's overreliance on extra-help workers. These are people doing essential work, many working full-time hours, and all without the same benefits, job security, or a path to permanency. ASME represents over 300 extra-help workers in the county, and many of them want to stay and grow with the county long term. But departments are hesitant to request FTEs they truly need, even when their workload clearly demands it. The vacancy rate presented today may seem manageable in the aggregate, but you must dig a little deeper and just to see what the real impact is. Public Works, HSA, Health Services, and PARPs are just some of the departments with serious staffing concerns. Our CFS Our CFS social workers, 911 dispatchers, stationary engineers, clinical labs, scientists, registered dental assistants, and more are stretched thin, and it's impacting the services our communities rely on. I also want to lift up Felipe's example and provide some more context. CFS social worker vacancy rates have hovered near 40 to 50% for the last year or two. This leads to burnout and has a real impact on the community. As a result, response times are lagging, employees are working under extreme pressure, and the department struggles to retain and attract talent. San Mateo County competes with San Francisco and Santa Clara County for these positions, and while they offer similar wages, the other agencies offer better differentials. For example, Santa Clara County provides a 9% differential for CFS social workers assigned to the emergency response unit, and San Francisco provides a 5% differential. Meanwhile, San Mateo County provides an across-the-board 2% staffing differential to address the short staffing and the previously negotiated differential for employees in child or adult protective services, emergency response, and family reunification, rose rolled into their base pay in 2017 and has not kept up with comparators. While financial incentives help, they don't address the root problem. Employees are overworked due to chronic understaffing, which affects both their well-being and the quality of services provided as San Mateo County residents. The county has implemented hiring and retention bonuses, but these were done without negotiating with Ask Me, and they don't apply to all employees equally or hired before the program's start date. Many of these hard-to-fill positions don't benefit from what the county offers. There's no work-life balance. There's no flexing of your schedule. There's no, there is increased mandatory overtime, and there's little ability to accommodate time off. Lastly, I just want to acknowledge the powerful speakers that we've heard throughout the day and express Ask Me's full solidarity with the immigrant community. We are outraged by what's happening across the country, and especially the escalation we saw in Southern California this weekend. Additionally, the illegal detainment of SEIU California President David Orta has shocked the labor community, and we urge the board to do anything within your power to stand up to this kind of targeting and abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have the public hearing open. I don't have any speakers from chambers, but I do have one written comment, which I'll read at the end. Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Thank you. We're on item number 14, so please click your raised hand to comment. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Sorry. The written comment, it'll be very quick. It's from Kyla Valenti, Treasurer, Ask Me, Local 829. As a resident of San Mateo County and member of her workforce, I am reminded every day of the importance of strong public service in our community. Observing that more than 10% of positions are vacant, especially in classifications that perform sensitive roles in human services and healthcare, is disappointing, to say the least. Back to you, Mr. President.
Great. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
There's a motion to close.
All right, great. Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rosio, I'm a little perplexed here because I got an email from Claire Cunningham announcing some good news where we have reduced the vacancy rate at CFS to 12.5%, and she recently hired 29 additional social workers. So I don't know how that fits in with the comments that have just been made by the two union representatives.
Yes, thank you so much, Supervisor Spear, for that. As was mentioned, we have taken the opportunity to revamp some of the processes with regards to our recruitment of social workers, children's social workers, and one of those strategies centered on reviewing the job requirements. And so we refined those job requirements, and now we're offering the hiring incentives. And the last recruitment that was recently held, we had 116 applicants, which was an incredible number of folks applying. Forty-six were invited to interview, 35 passed, and as of today, nine have already been hired and maybe more based on the information that you received from Claire Cunningham. And the department is anticipating to fill 50 to 60% of those vacancies in time for their July cohort, their training. And then I also want to note that with regards to turnover, that was also mentioned, and taking a look at the current year turnover for children's social workers, we have seen a decrease. So as of today, we have five. Last year, it was 16. So there has been a decrease there, and I recognize the concerns that were brought up in terms of the type of work and the amount of work. And so we are working closely with the department to identify strategies also around employee well-being and making sure that we're offering those support services.
Thank you. The child support services was alarming to me in terms of the vacancy rate, as was the probation numbers. Can you give us a monthly report informally so we can stay on track trying to deal with this vacancy rate that exists?
Absolutely. I can certainly do that. And with the child support vacancies, I believe those may be tied to state funding, so it may be linked to that, but I'm happy to report out on that and provide that additional context.
And if there's any additional recommendations you have, particularly for those two areas, I think we'd be interested in knowing about them.
I would love to share that with you, yes.
Great.
With all of you. Thank you.
Questions?
Rosio, thank you so much. I, too, have just a few questions. I know you talked about it in the presentation, but what are some of the barriers really? Can you just reiterate the barriers to hiring these really important positions?
So with regards to the hard-to-fill positions? Yes, so in terms of the, on the recruitment side, it's primarily centers on the competition, right? So those, those social workers, other Bay Area counties are also hiring social workers as well as the private sector. So I would say that that is one of the primary, primary reasons for that. And then in terms of you having candidates come from, relocate, come live in San Mateo County, as I mentioned, the Bay Area's cost of living does have an impact with regards to that. And then lastly, in terms of retention, we've seen a shift in our workforce expectation post-pandemic, and really, our employees want flexibility. And I'm not solely referring to remote work, because that is one type of flexibility, but also flexibility with regards to their schedules. So those, their alternative types of flexibility, flexibility in how they do their work. So just like everyone else, I mean, we all want some control over how we manage our work and some autonomy around that. So I would say those are the, some of those drivers.
Sure, thank you. And where it is possible, are we able to remove the paper ceiling from some of those jobs? I know some jobs will require certification and those degrees, but where possible, have we thought about or looked at how we can remove those requirements?
So absolutely, and we have been taking a look at that. And so I mentioned that, you know, we don't focus on degrees. However, when we do have degree requirements, it's based on licensure or state requirements. But we have been refining our job announcements and description to make it more accessible for folks to apply.
Thank you. And then just thinking about the community, what partnerships or community outreach have we done? I know there was a job fair recently, but how are we working with just some of the surrounding communities that are, that even need better jobs to get them prepared or create a talent pipeline?
So you're right, we have been hosting public service career fairs, most recently last month, which was extremely successful. We've also had ones focused for veterans and one where we invited other public agencies to join us in promoting public sector as a whole employment. We have been reaching out to the community colleges and hope to form partnerships there for apprenticeships. There's been discussions around social workers, potentially for the trades around the stationary engineers. We also want to take a look at internal trainee programs for our employees and build those pipelines. I'm also aware of our team having discussions about partnerships with Inova Works. There's also been some outreach to job train, but certainly that's an area where we want to focus this upcoming year. So yes, absolutely, that's an area where there's opportunities for growth. And then I should also mention, we have our internships and our fellowship programs. Most recently, we've expanded to hire veterans through the Department of Defense Skill Bridge Program. So those are other types of partnerships that we're exploring.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. Can you speak a little bit? I think Supervisor Spear talked about monthly, was it monthly or monthly reports? I think that is, as we move forward, that is absolutely critical. You know, I want to sort of delve into the beginning of your presentation. When you had mentioned the issue of how long our employees are staying, did you say, what was the data point? If you can go back to that slide?
Yes, so the average years of service is 9.7 years.
And what assumptions do you make in terms of the change in that number?
So over the last few years, a lot of our employees have been retiring. And then similar to other employers, our employees are not staying as long as they used to with their employer. When we look at our current workforce, 37% have been here five or less years. So it is a relatively new workforce.
That's a significant number. I mean, we're talking, that is 37%.
Yes.
So.
I was, yes.
And so here's where my concern lies, is that with the limited workforce that we have, they're accepting more responsibilities. That's, that seems with, your workforce is less, your current workforce is assuming that additional work.
The workforce, in terms of our vacancy rate, as I mentioned, it's 11%, and that has decreased over the last few years. And that 11% is comparable with prior years. So the staffing level.
Can you go back to the years? I think, can you bring the slide up? I think it was 14%.
Oh, thank you.
If you can go back.
My apologies, I forgot I had this.
And Rosio, could you speak directly into the mic?
Oh, thank you. Okay. Let's see, where did I, it's the county vacancy, right there.
The vacancies, they do concern me, Rosio. And I'm hopeful, you know, and having this monthly update, I think is going to be critical on how we move forward and how we track. I'd like to see that number. What's the goal for your department? What would you like to see that number go down to for the next fiscal year and the fiscal year thereafter?
Historically, it has been at the 10% to 11% range. I think it'll be important for myself and my team to continue to learn more from the departments in terms of their vacancies. So I think having those monthly reports that we share with you will help us in terms of identifying what the recruitment needs are, and so we will work to, to get this to the, you know, the 10% and even lower.
Great, no, and that is really encouraging. You know, I want to thank you. I want to thank Mercedes, Felipe, and Ryan. We're all in this together and trying to figure out how we're gonna, gonna solve this issue. And I think for me, where I sort of, what I get concerned about is when I hear from our employees saying, this is a lot, and that we have to take, take action. So I'm looking forward to the monthly reports. Looking forward to seeing what progress we're going to make in this area. So I thank you. I thank you and your staff. With that, do we have any additional questions? No. Do we have a motion to accept this update?
Some of.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Hi.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And Supervisor Kanaba.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you so much, Rosio. Thank you, teams. With that, Mr. Clerk, we will adjourn into closed session. Mr. Niblin.
May I ask one thing? Supervisor Kanaba, unfortunately, I don't think I'll be coming back with this after closed session. I was gonna ask if we could hear item 23 before we did, just so I could be here for that item, which is a Measure K that Supervisor.
I'd actually ask for two things, then. Maybe a motion, well, maybe just one thing, a motion to amend the agenda to take item 23 before.
And 21.
Item 16, and to take closed session immediately after item 23.
One, two.
Well, something that, maybe, maybe we can have a conversation about this, Mr. President. You know, I've done some, I did some work with my, with my staff earlier today on the question of whether or not the board could take one vote on all of the Measure K items or groups of the Measure K items, as the board sees fit. My original thought was perhaps that would be inconsistent with, with the Brown Act of the law, but it turns out, you know, after looking at it closely, we're the view that if the board wanted to do one motion for a number of the Measure K items, it could do that. Specifically, the district discretionary Measure K items that are not focused on, you know, county-wide. If, I know there's been some concern expressed by, about those. So if the board wanted to take those items now by agreeing, by taking action to amend its agenda, could do that.
Items 19 through 31, unless someone had an objection to any of them.
Okay. There are no objections. There's a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
So the, so the motion is to take items 19 through 31 now, prior to item?
23.
23. You might consider a.
Actually, I would just, I can throw them, unless Supervisor Spear, you want to talk about 23, I could just move them all at one time.
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that.
All right, so let's just go ahead, move items 19 through 31.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller. There's a second by Supervisor Gochet.
And we would have to afford, of course, the public opportunity to comment on any and all of these items at this time.
Sure. Do we have any public comments on item 19 through 31?
I do have one speaker, Mr. President. It's from Justin Wosterlane on item number 21. And then after that, we'll take comments from Zoom for 19 through 31.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Wosterlane. I'm the Assistant Director of the Peninsula Library System.
Did you speak into the microphone?
My organization is very grateful for this Measure K opportunity, and I appreciate the time given to speak on this. We know that the, it's very important right now for connection in our community. The results of the Measure K listening sessions have shown that, you know, there was a large demand for space where there can be constructive dialogue with other community members. And we've heard from the health presentation earlier that loneliness is an issue in our community, and there is a desire for more social interaction. So with this Measure K opportunity, we'll be able to have library programming, which will hopefully bring together large portions of our community, community-wide, not just in District 1, which is this, where it's coming from. And with this, we'll have opportunities for people to discuss things with one another, talk about larger issues in the community, and really build those connections that are so important to make sure that we have a very functional and livable society that we're in. And I'm sorry, my time is short, so that was meant to be a lot longer, but I very much appreciate this opportunity that you have given us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers from chambers wishing to speak on items 19 through 31? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Through the chair, if I could. For Supervisor Spear, if you feel more comfortable, if we take 19 on its own and then do 20 through the rest of them, we could do that also.
I was actually gonna suggest, it may be that items 21, item 21 as well, it looked like was, was one that I think came from Supervisor Spear as well. Am I, am I wrong about that? That's the, what was 19, 20, and 21?
It was 20 and 21, and, I mean, I'm happy to have them taken in one vote. I had a couple of presentations, which I will not belabor at this point, but this is yet another example of why we should do our work first and do the ceremonial work second, because these were important. And what I will do instead is, you know, make a presentation under comments at another time, but it's really very frustrating to me.
Thank you, Supervisor Spear. So we have 19 through 31. Is there any remote comment?
Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Sure, we're not taking public comments again for items number 19 through 31. Please raise your hand at this time to comment on any of those. We have one hand raised for Beverly May. Beverly, please unmute and begin. We have one hand raised for Beverly May. Beverly, please unmute and begin.
Hello, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I support the creation of this human trafficking cybercrimes unit pilot program in the DA's office. I'm very pleased to have some kind of program addressing human trafficking in this county restored after it was terminated, I believe, earlier last year. And I'd like to see it get, see us join the rest of the counties in the Greater Bay Area that all have programs through the District Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Thank you Beverly, and that was for item number twenty-three. No further hands, Mr. President.
All right, with that, Supervisor Mueller, you, you put a motion on the table, correct?
Yes, I've made the motion.
It's been seconded, correct?
Correct, by Supervisor Gochet.
And to be clear, it was to move these items to consideration now and for approval of each of these items?
For approval of each of the items.
Correct. Thank you so much. We'll take a roll call, please.
Okay, well do. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Kanaba?
Yes.
Motion passes for items nineteen through thirty-one, with Supervisor Corzo being absent.
Thank you, and I, Mr. President, I'd ask for one more motion, that is to amend the agenda to move the closed session up to consideration before the remaining items on the regular agenda.
I'll move.
Is there a second? Roll call please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Gochet, and President Kanaba?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, the board is currently in recess, the time is now twelve fifty, two PM. We will resume shortly, in about thirty seconds. All right, Mr. President, we're back in open session, the time is one forty-five PM. And for the records, Supervisors Corzo and Mueller are absent. Supervisor Gochet, Supervisor Spear, and President Kanaba are present. And Mr. County Attorney, anything to report out?
Yes, through the, through the President, I will, will report out that in closed session, the board on a four-zero vote with Supervisor Corzo absent, authorized the county to join in the litigation of City and County of San Francisco et al. v. Trump, case number twenty-five dash C V dash zero one three five zero, which is pending in the Northern District, United States District Court for the Northern District of California. In addition, on that same four-zero vote with Supervisor Corzo absent, the board authorized initiation of litigation in a case that will be identified at the time required by law.
Great, thank you very much, County Attorney. Next, we have item fifteen, a resolution authorizing agreement with C B I Z Technology LLC for the provision of AI plan review services, with the term commencing on June tenth, twenty twenty-five, through June ninth, twenty twenty-eighth. My understanding is that there's information in the packet for members to review. Mr. Monowitz?
Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin? Yes, item number fifteen is a three-year contract to pilot an AI assisted plan review service. And I'm here today to request the board's approval to enter into an agreement with C B I Z Technology for a three-year contract totaling approximately one point two million to develop an AI system for reviewing building permits. This is a pilot to determine if AI will be a useful and effective tool for plan review. There's an important six-month proof of concept period, and that will total the costs of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so the project overview, planning and building receives approximately three thousand five hundred building and planning permit applications annually, and each permit application may have numerous rounds of review. Currently, plan review of permit applications is performed through a combination of in-house staff and third-party plan reviewers. The step can take thirty days or more due to large volumes of permits. The pilot will develop AI tools customized to San Mateo County regulations and California building code requirements to allow us to rapidly process plan reviews. The system will integrate with the other systems we use to process permits. That's our online permitting system and our electronic plan markup system. Importantly, this does not use generative AI. It uses rules-based predictive logic that checks for zoning and building code compliance. So the pilot will implement two existing software platforms. Blitz Permits, which has already established itself as a leader in AI plan review, and UiPath robotic process automation, which will be used to automate the, and configure the system. As I mentioned, it will be customized based on the county's regulations and will result in three different tools. Blitz Residential for residential building permits, Blitz Building for commercial buildings, and Blitz Planning for planning review. The tools will be, the tools will review submitted plans for compliance with relevant regulations, then provide redline markups with narratives for any non-compliance elements. The AI plan review system will continuously improve through user feedback, including the acceptance or rejection of markups. So the way it will work is plans will be submitted through the Excela system. It will, they will automatically be transferred to the AI analysis engine. The AI analysis engine will perform the code compliance review and route results through an action center where county staff will review and provide feedback. The final markup plans will then be returned to the Excela system. At each step of the way, county staff will retain oversight and be responsible for the decision-making steps. So the implementation timeline will be, as I mentioned, include a six-month proof of concept process for, two months for each of the three AI tools. And the performance criteria that we'll use to evaluate the proof of concept is eighty percent accuracy on visual markups, eighty percent of comments accepted, successful integration with our other systems, and any errors with the system resolved within a ten-day period. Once the proof of concept is approved, the tool will be functional and will convert to a monthly subscription. So, as I mentioned, the primary focus of this pilot, pilot is to determine if the AI tool will meet our needs. The proof of concept will happen in year one. After we're satisfied with each proof of concept, we'll begin the subscription. Other costs associated with getting this system up and running, including support from ISD. The total cost for the first year, which includes going through the proof of concepts and establishing the system, automating the system, integrating it with our other systems, and getting it up and running, it will be about a fifty, five hundred thousand dollar investment. That's the amount of money that we've been allocated for this project to date. As I mentioned earlier, the contract is a three-year contract with a value of over one point two million. Whether or not we go beyond the five hundred thousand dollars that we've been allocated will depend on the successful completion of the proof of concept. Then in year two, we'll complete the customization, at which point there'll be an increase in the enterprise subscription cost. I would note that that subscription cost will not kick in until we're through with the proof of concept period. And then we anticipate that the AI plan review system will be fully operational in year three, and that will result in a slightly higher subscription cost. With regard to data security, all data will be housed within US-based data systems. And upon termination of the contract, the vendor must return all county data and destroy any copies. So we expect many benefits from implementation of this system, benefits to both our applicants and our staff. It will be an important tool that will allow us to significantly improve the speed, accuracy, and consistency of our plan reviews. It will reduce permit turnaround times and allow us to issue permits more quickly. It will help staff manage a large workload and process permits more quickly overall, and allow them to focus on more complex, higher priority work. In addition, it will reduce our current reliance on contract plan review services, which costs the department over one point three million dollars per year. Specifically, at the end of the first year of the project, we anticipate that we'll be able to reduce our use of third-party plan reviewers by about thirty percent. That will equate to a reduction in approximately two thousand seven, seven hundred hours of outside plan review services and savings of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. By the end of year three, we should be able to almost completely eliminate the use of third-party plan reviewers by significantly increasing our internal capacity for plan review. This has the potential to create promotional opportunities for staff who currently route plans to outside reviewers by allowing them to get more involved in the plan review process. So with regard to impacts to county positions, we anticipate that staff in the following job classifications will be using this software. Our planners, our building permit technicians, plans examiners, and our IT analysts. Administrative staff are not expected to use the software directly, but as a result of efficiency that the system will create, they may be involved in updating and revamping internal operating procedures. We do not anticipate any reduction in permanent county positions as a result of this pilot or through attrition. Staff-affected classifications will use this as a tool to enhance efficiency and accuracy. But these staff may have other duties and are needed to oversee the plan review process and make the final decisions. So with regard to other actions the board has taken, with regard to AI, we've reviewed the resolutions that this board has passed and worked with ISD to ensure that this project will be carried out consistent with those resolutions. We also provided as an attachment to the staff report the answers to the questions that the board has requested all AI projects to address. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
President Kanaba, may I add one thing before you turn over to the board? This is something I've asked Mr. Monowitz to, to look into several years back, because we have got to become more efficient in the building and planning. Time is money here, and we're talking about building housing or ADUs or even commercial space. It is absolutely essential that we become more proficient at getting those plans through. And quite frankly, our employees are just overwhelmed by the volume. This will give them a tool to help them expedite these, these plans through the process and back to the contractors so that they can get the work done much, much quicker. It will also eliminate, like Mr. Monowitz indicated, our reliance on third-party contractors, which is something that we have wanted to get away from for a long period of time, but haven't been able to just because of the sheer volume of planning. So, but you know, the, the thing that I visualize, and certainly it probably won't come to fruition right away, is that, you know, we turn around plans within twenty-four hours and that corrections are self-made on the plans and give them back to the planner if they're off on some building code that they didn't realize, where it would move a light to where it was to code. Those are the type of things where I think we can really become proficient as a county and really serve the public in a more efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Spear?
Thank you. So the processing time will be reduced by how much? What is it now?
Well, right now, when we send out plans for outside plan reviews, it usually takes thirty days and potentially more. You know, as Mike indicated, when it's fully up and running, it might have the ability to complete the review with building code within, you know, a twenty-four-hour period. So, yeah, we anticipate a significant reduction in review time. The system will address all components of our review. We've got our FIRE represented here today. FIRE will continue to review plans for compliance with the FIRE code. You know, geotechnical issues will be looked at as they currently are. So it won't completely eliminate the need for additional staff review beyond the AI system. But the AI system will make significant reductions in the amount of time.
Do these companies have a, a track record? Or are we the guinea pig?
As far as I know, we're the guinea pig in California. Blitz Permits is operating in the East Coast, I believe in Florida. They have actually initiated work with other California jurisdictions. The Blitz Permits.
Shouldn't they be paying us?
I, I would characterize it on, as being on the cutting edge in California, so.
So, since, I mean, Florida is not a state that I would want to compare ourselves to, certainly. But since we are kind of their initial client here in California, if it's not working, is there a termination clause so we can yank it?
Absolutely.
And what is that termination clause?
I think we can terminate it if we are ever displeased with the way it's functioning, so.
Well, I mean, it's a contract, so is there a thirty-day, sixty-day, or do you not have a termination clause?
I know we have a termination clause. I do not know off the top of my head about the timeframe we have to give them.
If you give me a second, I will find the termination clause, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'll confirm that it is thirty days. At any time, without a requirement of good cause, upon thirty days advance written notice. So it's a very robust termination clause.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Gochet?
Sure, thank you for the report. I'm, I'm all for innovation as well. Can you talk a little bit more about the rules, the rules-based predictive logic and the difference? I know you, you mentioned it briefly, but what, what will be the difference?
This is a little bit above my knowledge of the system, but I, at a very basic level, my understanding is, what will happen is the code will be programmed into the system and the decisions will be maced on whether or not the construction drawings comply with the code requirements as entered into the system. As far as, you know, making predictions and so forth, we don't, that's not a component of the system. All the final decisions will be made by the staff, so at no point will we hand over the decision-making to the AI system.
And what does, what does success look like? How will you determine success with this project, this product?
Right, so I went through some of the performance criteria with regard to the proof of concept, right? And so that means that we're getting accurate results. Where we're not getting accurate results, the corrections are made and effectively address those issues.
But is there a percentage that you're, you're looking to?
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent of that correction?
Eighty percent at the proof of concept stage. But I think, you know, over the long term, what success looks like is very much what Mike was describing in terms of making significant improvements in our turnaround times and hopefully providing a useful tool to our applicants as well that might give them the ability to self-check their plans before they submit to us so that they'll have a better chance of getting an approval on their first submittal.
Well, I'm excited for the proof of concept and look forward to getting a report back on how well this product will work.
Yes, we will be back within a year, and I look forward to informing you of the results.
Great. You know, Steve, we've been, as Mike had mentioned, we've been dealing with sort of issues about how do we move people through the system faster? And I know, you know, my work in, in the city of Daly City and, and here in the county, sometimes there's issues with outside plan reviews, right? In terms of delay, in terms of what their workload is outside of the county of San Mateo, whether they're working with, with other cities. You know, to me, this is clearly an example of the power of AI and using it, how we're going to be able to scale. You talked a little bit about the efficiencies. I think, you know, especially, you know, it's our fiduciary responsibility to identify. I think, you know, especially, you know, it's our fiduciary responsibility to identify ways to be more efficient, right? And to deliver for taxpayers. I think this item clearly does that. So I want to recognize, I mean, we've been, Supervisor Slocum has been working on this for a number of years, not the AI component, but how are we able to get people to get their permits faster? This is a way to do that. So I just want to thank you and your staff for your work. Do we have any public comment at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker slips for item number 15, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for item 15, an agreement with Sebis Technology. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right. Can I get a motion on this item? Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes with Supervisor Mueller and Corzo being absent.
Congratulations. We now come to item 16, a resolution authorizing and directing the county executive officer or designated to establish a contracting policy for janitorial service contracts awarded by the county. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Goshay and myself. Supervisor Goshay, could I ask you to please say some words?
Sure. Thank you, President Canepa. I want to add that this resolution is about standing up for the people who make a real difference in our daily lives, our janitorial workers. These individuals help create clean, safe spaces where our community gathers, works, and thrives. Their work supports the health and well-being of everyone who walks through the county facilities, yet they often face challenges like low wages. This resolution sends a clear message that we value their contributions and are committed to ensuring they receive fair treatment and respect. By investing in our essential workers, we're investing in the strength and resilience of our whole community. When we care for those who care for us, we build a county that works for everyone.
Thank you so much. Nicely said. I'll just add on to those comments. You know, I think today I'm asking for your support for the resolution, obviously with Supervisor Goshay rooted in fairness, responsibility, and respect for the essential workers who help keep our county running, our janitors. Janitorial workers often go unseen but never unnoticed. They are the first line of defense in ensuring our public spaces are clean, safe, and dignified. During the pandemic, they worked through the crisis. Today, they continue to serve quietly, tirelessly, and often underpaid. But behind this essential work lies an industry where too many face low wages, injuries, misclassification, and some of the worst cases, harassment. A UCLA labor study tells us 62% of janitors are low-wage workers and 40% live near or below the poverty line. Many are older adults working under physically demanding conditions, often without adequate protections or health coverage. This resolution takes a stand. It directs the county executive's office to establish a contracting policy that ensures companies bidding on janitorial work in our facilities, respect labor rights, pay prevailing wages, and support workers' rights to representation. It also strengthens job protections during transitions between contractors, offering stability for the people who keep our buildings safe and clean. This isn't just about the contracts, it's about values. If we believe in dignity and justice and using our public dollars responsibly, we must align our policies with those beliefs. We're not just contracting for services, we're investing in people. Let's lead with integrity and set a standard worthy of the work these individuals do every day. With that, I don't know if there are any comments from the board members? All right. Do we have public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for item 16 for the janitorial service contracts. We do have one hand raised from Sam Keheindy from SEIU. Sam, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak in front of you today. Unfortunately, I'm not able to join you guys in person. As you know, my union president was arrested last Friday in Los Angeles, David Weta. Thanks to every council member supervisor that sent a letter, that make a phone call that was, what about my president? I said sort of the ICE raid that's going on in Los Angeles. So the work that my president David Weta does every day is to stand up for the working people, in this case, our immigrant workers. As council, you know, as Supervisor Canepa just mentioned, the janitorial workers that my union represent, they go unnoticed, they clean the bathroom, they vacuum the floor to make sure that the building is safe and secure. We ask every supervisor to please support this resolution. It will make a great deal for, you know, for the workers, for our union, and to make sure that they, you know, San Mateo County continue to use a responsible, you know, responsible janitorial company. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments?
Thank you. Yes, we do have two more speakers, Araceli followed by Amelia Bunch. Araceli, please unmute and begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Araceli and I'm a political organizer with SEIU USWW. On behalf of our union, I'm here today to urge the county of San Mateo to adopt a responsible contractor policy. Irresponsible contractors have a troubling track record, including alleged failures to meet fair labor standards in cities like Palo Alto and across the Bay Area. By adopting a responsible contracting policy, San Mateo can protect public interest, ensure quality services, and avoid risks associated with hiring contractors who do not meet basic standards. We urge the county of San Mateo to stand with workers, protect public resources, and support equity by adopting a responsible contracting policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Amelia Bunch, please unmute and begin.
Hi, guys. This is Ashish Kumar. Actually, I was logged in from Amelia Bunch's counter. I'll begin. My name is Ashish Kumar. I'm a union rep with SEIU USWW, and we work, I want to say that we work hard every day to keep public buildings clean and safe, especially during the pandemic, but many of us have been employed by contractors who don't respect our rights, pay us late, or cut corners on safety. That's why we need a responsible contractor policy to protect workers and make sure our work is valued. This is a statement I got from one of our members, and it was really touching statement. So I really want to urge you guys to look into bringing into a responsible contractor because non-unionized contractors, they don't like to give voice to their workers, and that's what, and then they, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Ashish. And, Mr. President, we have one hand raised now for Leonardo Rodriguez. Leonardo, please unmute and begin.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name is Leo Rodriguez. I am here on behalf of SEIU USWW as an internal organizer to proclaim my strong support for this responsible contracting policy for the San Mateo County. This policy not only ensures that taxpayer dollars go to contractors who provide fair wages, safe working conditions, and good benefits to our members, but also, you know, prioritizes standards that only really irresponsible contractors can consistently meet. By prioritizing responsible contractors, the county invests in skilled local workers, strengthens our middle class, and builds quality projects that last. We urge you to pass this policy and ensure that public funds support responsible employers who value their workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a final call as we have one additional hand raised. This is for item 16, janitorial service contracts. Final call has been made, and the last speaker we will take is Mercedes Morales. Mercedes, please unmute and begin.
Anna Mesa, yo, mi nombre Anna Mesa, yo apoyo a las.
Mercedes? Un momento, por favor. Interpreter, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ari. Buenas tardes, Mercedes. Victor Hernandez, le voy a traducir todo lo que usted tenga que decir. Si mantiene los trozos de información cortos para que le pueda escuchar todo mundo, sí? Mercedes?
Hola, mi nombre es Anna Mesa, soy miembro de SEIU WW, y como miembro he visto, yo apoyo y he visto los beneficios que tengo como miembro. He visto la protección que tengo del robo de salario, he visto las protecciones que tengo y muchos beneficios sobre la salud, sobre el maltrato. He visto los beneficios que tengo como miembro activo de SEIU WW y estoy aquí para apoyar.
Muchas gracias.
So my name is Anna Mesa, and I'm a member of SEIU. And being a member, I also support and have seen all the benefits that I have as a member with the salary theft and the protection of that. I have also seen all of the benefits that I have when it comes to health care and everything else, and through SEIU, I'm here to support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. That concludes public comment? So, thank you so much. Lisa, Supervisor Goshay, would you like to make the motion?
Second.
Okay. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes with Supervisor Corzo and Mueller being absent.
All right. Thank you so much. We now come to item 17, introduction and ordinance of the San Mateo County Fire Department Designing Fire Hazard Severity Zones in its jurisdiction. Thank you so much. Let me kick it off to Mr. Caligy.
I'm sorry, let me turn it over to the fire chief to really fill the board in on this item.
Thank you.
And Chief, you have the clicker right there.
Thank you. President Canepa, board, Mr. Caligy, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the fire hazard severity zones. So I'm going to give a brief history on, should be back one there. I'm going to give a brief history on the fire hazard severity zones and how we've gotten to where we are today talking about this. So most folks know in 1991, there was the Tunnel Fire, which was, we most know as the Oakland Hills Fire. Out of that came the Bates Bill, and that had us identify very high local response area severity. In 2007, those models were finally put out, so they were released in 2008, took a little bit of time, but they were identified, and it was only very high that was identified. As we know from the Tubbs Fire, the Camp Fire, and actually most recently, which occurred after 2001 and 2002, we had the Palisades and Eaton Fire in January. In 2021, Assembly Bill 642 and Senate Bill 63 required that we identify moderate and high hazard severity zones in the LRA. In 2022, AB 211 required that the local agency having jurisdiction adopt the maps that were produced from CAL FIRE. So CAL FIRE released those maps in February. We had 30 days to post those maps and make them public, and we are here today to do the first reading, and then I believe at the next meeting it would be for approval if agreed. So state responsibility and local responsibility areas, SRA versus LRA. So the, on the left side, you see the state responsibility area. That is where the state of California has the jurisdictional responsibility to provide wildfire protection and prevention. In the LRA, which is identified on the right side, that shows where San Mateo County is obligated to provide wildland fire protection or prevention, and those identify those zones which are high, very high, high, and moderate. Sorry, here, this thing keeps vibrating at me. Doesn't want to go forward. So very high, high, and moderate. Why are we adopting these or looking at adopting these is because it's going to put specific requirements within those zones. So was it within the very high, and there's a comparison there, so SRA was adopted last year. LRA, you would adopt the fire hazard severity zone. Sequel would apply to projects. The subdivision map act would take place. Safety elements would be required within the county's safety element plan. Fire safe regulations take place. Chapter 7A, which is the WUWE building code, so ensuring that people are building their home to the current requirements. Defensible space inspections will be required, and a hazard disclosure would be required. So when someone goes to sell their home, they're required to have a disclosure done, and then the subdivision review would take place, and those are all in the very high. In the high zone, you would adopt the ordinance. Hazard disclosure would be required, and the chapter 7A building code would be applied. And then the moderate, it's just the adoption of the ordinance for the map that was provided. So here's the map for San Mateo County. You can see that there are some significant portions of very high above the coastside fire protection district, and then along the coastline, and then along some areas north of the Upper Lakes area. And I put down here, there's about 9,500 acres that fall under this ordinance. In the very high, there's 38,000, excuse me, 3,800 acres. In the high, there's 2,900, and in the moderate, there's 2,700 acres. So some things to remember for those folks listening online or in here. Prepariness is key, so I wanted to do a little bit of prepariness plug-in here, making sure that your Zone Zero, your Zone One, and Zone Three are all in place if you live in the wild urban interface. And then things we can do, defensible space, home hardening, participating in the Fire Safe Council, or being a firewise community, participating in evacuation drills and messaging, which we have consistently been doing the last couple of years, signing up for SMC alerts to make sure that you're notified when we are in a situation where you need to be evacuating or having knowledge of something going on, and then knowing your zone within Genasis, the software that we currently use to identify evacuation zones. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. Do we have any public comments on this item? Yes, Supervisor Spear?
Presuming this gets passed, how are we going to be notifying residents about this new requirement?
So we'll do a campaign. Right now, we have it posted on the website, and we've done some social media messaging, Nextdoor, Instagram, X, those type things. So once it's adopted, then what we'll do is the fire crews will be required in the very high to do defensible space inspections. So they'll be going out, going home to home, educating them on the changes, and then we'll work with the different departments within the county to make sure they apply the applicable planning and building code changes that happen.
Well, I think that there needs to be some kind of written notice that's provided to them first because lots of people work and conceivably not be home, and I think there's just a requirement that we should.
Are you, like, a mailer?
Yes.
Okay. That's something we can look into for sure. Would you prefer that that's done to the very high and high and moderate, or just to specific areas that are going to be impacted with the ordinance?
Well, I think it should go to everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for item 17 for an ordinance with San Mateo County Fire Department. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great. Supervisor Spear, would you like to introduce the ordinance?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear? Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Corzo and Mueller being absent.
Through the clerk, I believe this is our final item.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So item 18 is a resolution authorizing a cooperative fire protection agreement with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection to provide fire protection services for the term of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027.
All right. Thank you, President Canepa, board members, Mr. Caligy. I'm here again.
One second. Look familiar.
Yeah.
Do you want to introduce your colleagues?
Oh, actually, I will introduce my colleagues. So this is Ryan West. He's the new deputy chief for San Mateo County Fire.
Okay.
As many know, Chief Cox moved on to another agency within the county. So Ryan had worked under Chief Cox, and he's our new deputy. And then this is Brett Norwine. Earlier today, you guys, under- you guys, under consent, approved the contract for Glenwood Fire Center to be house our fire crews. He is the division chief that oversees that program. So we're looking forward to having crews here in the county to fuel reduction, better operational response, and utilize a facility that was not being utilized.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to present the 2025-26-26-27 contract with CAL FIRE. So a little history on the county. I'm assuming everybody here probably knows, but in 1887, a fire commission was formed here in the county. And in 1890, you had your first volunteer fire company.
Chief, if you could speak into the mic.
Sorry. I apologize. In 1921, was one of the first major recorded fires within the county, and that was out in Butano State Park, similar to where the CZU fire was. So after 2021, there was a large push to have fire stations within the county. So between 2021 and 1936, there were a lot of stations added to the county, which we currently have. In 1962, the county began contacting with CAL FIRE. So 63 years ago, we entered into this partnership that we still have today. In 1970, the San Mateo Santa Cruz unit was established as the county was not part of a CAL FIRE unit prior to that. One highlight that I'd like to add in there is that in 2018, the Highlands CSA 1 became ISO Class 1 rating, which is a highly regarded classification. And then we had the lightning fires in 2020. So our staffing model here in the county, our daily operational staffing is four ALS engines at four different stations, along with an ALS truck. The 3O and the 4O are the number of personnel on that piece of equipment. And we have one battalion chief funded by the county. And then there's also a CAL FIRE battalion chief on duty at the same time. We have three volunteer companies, La Honda, Kings Mountain, and Lomomar. And then we have our administration and fire marshal staff, which includes a deputy chief, a division chief, a public information officer, our fire marshal and his staff, and a WUWE captain. So some accomplishments and highlights, we have standards and metrics that we're required to meet each year under the contract, and we've been in compliance with those for, I'm assuming, the last 63 years. But this last year that I've been in this position, we just reported, and we were in 100% compliance. So that's response times, mandatory inspections, and defensible space inspections. San Mateo County does run around, fire runs around 2,000 to 2,500 annual calls. Just recently in April, the San Mateo auditor audited the agreement with CAL FIRE. And I wrote down here, it stated that CAL FIRE is complying with the contract terms and requirements, and the county appears to be receiving reasonable value and services provided, and there were no findings per the audit. So that was positive. Measure K, we have benefited, county fires benefited from Measure K, and we appreciate that. Over the last 10 years, we've replaced all of the county fire fleet to modernized equipment that has reduced maintenance costs, more operationally capable. And we also received the funding for our public information officer, our WUWE fire captain, which is our wild urban interface captain, and one other here that I'm, and our forestry two assistant, which helps on all the fuel reduction projects that we have going in the county. So fuel reduction, we're completing the Kings Mountain evacuation route currently. We've been working with Hillsboro as well. And last, since July till December, we did 60 crew hours in San Mateo. 164 acres were treated, 180 hazard trees were removed, and we prescribed burned 460 acres within the county. So a lot of positive work being done out there. Some benefits of contracting with CAL FIRE is that you have the abilities for surge capacity. So along with the San Mateo County Fire Department, you also have the CAL FIRE resources. So we have 13 engines staffed daily on the CAL FIRE side, along with two bulldozers, five crews, three state battalion chiefs, and that also allows the opportunity, if there's a red flag, to staff additional equipment. Automatic and mutual aid of state resources, those are at your request from the county fire with the relationship with CAL FIRE. Long-term retirement liability is not there when you contract with CAL FIRE. Is that as part of the administrative rate in the contract? So you will not have long-term liability when you contract with CAL FIRE, which is something that is a great benefit to the county. After 63 years of having a fire department, there's no CAL FIRE's liability for the county. Continuity of services, we have ISO reviews. I talked about CSA 1 being a Class 1, that's part of that. Fire investigation and the programs and services that are included for the employees, occupational health, EEO, behavior, health and wellness. We have three training centers within the state. Our technology suite, management services, Office of Accountability, professional standards, legal, and technology are all included with your contract with CAL FIRE. So the ask for the two-year agreement, we are coming out of a six-year agreement with the county CAL FIRE, which was a $99 million agreement. And we are looking to go into a two-year agreement. And the reason behind that is we do some shared services with the Coastside Fire District on positions due to workload, and that would align when Coastside goes to renew in two years, and we can look at the duration there. So this is why we're looking at a two-year. It's a just under $40 million ask for those two years. And the only change that is happening within what we are doing today, which we would be doing on July 1, would be to convert three positions to fire captain, so that we can meet a fire captain and two other personnel on every piece of equipment, meeting the CAL FIRE 66-hour implementation. So we're reducing the work week of our employees for health and safety, and making sure that we're more close to an industry standard. So we've gone from a 72-hour to a 66, and they're looking at a 56 in the future. And we are built to meet that. If they go to a 56, San Mateo County currently staffs where they could support that. And we've made Exhibit E, which is kind of the descriptions and roles of what county and CAL FIRE are responsible for. We've really made that much more robust, and that's just going to help with transparency and accountability for both sides. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? You know, I have a couple of questions. Can you speak to, I know the county has invested heavily in Measure K around capital and the fire trucks. Can you speak a little bit to the life of those fire trucks right now?
Like, the duration in which they would need to be replaced again?
Correct.
Chief West would probably be the most appropriate person, as he's implemented that plan. But NFPA require is a recommendation of 10 to 15-year replacement, but I'll let Chief West.
Yeah, it's a 10 to 15-year replacement for our fire engines and specialty vehicles are the 15 to 20 years. So that'd be like our technical rescue vehicles and our ladder trucks.
Can you remind me through Measure K, how many of those trucks did we purchase? Was it one, two, or?
So right now, we're at four Type 1 engines, a water tender for La Honda volunteers, two specialized rescue vehicles, about five staff vehicles, and a couple of trailers and miscellaneous vehicles to support the operation. And so we've been able to modernize our fleet. So right now, our, you know, we still have some engines on order. The process takes about three to four years to build it from signing contracts. So the last two Type 1 fire engines that we've purchased will be delivered in December of this year.
Got it.
Chief, did we also get a ladder truck with the Measure K? Was that a different fund?
You know, I think, so that, I got brought over to county fire from Coastside in 2016, and that's when we took delivery of that ladder truck. I believe it was ordered in 2014, and I'm not sure if that was Measure K funds or not.
I think it was, but yeah, thanks.
Great. And just, I was reviewing the contract. You had said, we had initially, was it a nine-year agreement, you had said?
Six years was the previous agreement.
And just so I understand this clearly, so now we're going to a two-year agreement to align with Coastside. Help me understand the thinking around that.
Yeah. So when we change an agreement, we have to go through an amendment process. So I come to the board here, you approve or deny that change request. I then have to submit that to Sacramento to Cooperative Fire. Cooperative Fire then takes that to DGS for a signature, and that's anywhere from efficiently a month to a three-month process before we can effect that change. So if we needed to make a change in an agreement, it would take up to three months before we could actually have that person. And then we have to go through our hiring process to hire that person. So we have that timeframe there. If we align with Coastside, Chief West's position is funded 50% by San Mateo County and 50% by Coastside. So as long as we align with Coastside, it'll allow for a more seamless amendment process if we need to amend an agreement.
And is the plan thereafter, two years, to create an agreement that's a six-year, 10? I mean, what's the plan?
The longer, I think, the better. Creates stability, allows our workforce not to worry when a contract is up. You know, there's always question of like, is it going to be renewed? I think with our 63-year track record and our employees being extremely professional, meeting all the metrics, I would hope that we could look at a longer agreement than, you know, maybe it's five, six, eight years, something like that. But I think that would be a conversation that the board would probably have and give us a recommendation.
And then finally, can you bring the last slide up? I want to understand the increase. So the increase between the last agreement, is it, what's the percentage? It's a, can you explain that to me from our last agreement?
So from the last agreement is, we did not, it's not a 5% increase. It's actually only around $250,000, which is around a 2-point-something percent increase. And that's because we had built a six-year agreement, and when you build an agreement, it's 5%. So it's a 30% increase in that six years from start to finish, which in realization, we, it's billed total, or it's, you only build actual, but you're, the budget is built for total. So even though it's a, last year was 19.5, I believe, we will probably not reach that. So it's not to exceed. So we just built off of the current projected increases of salary for this year, and then put the 5% for next year.
Got it. Okay.
So it's realized, it's not just a 5% off of last year, because that would have inflated the numbers.
Okay. So it's an up to, basically?
Yeah, it's not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any public comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers for item number 18. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand, item 18, for the cooperative fire protection agreement. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion? Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And President Kenapa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Corzo and Miller being absent.
Thank you for all your work, and we look forward to continued partnership, and I think this agreement is favorable. So thank you. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you. All the time. It's now 2:36 PM. Our meeting is adjourned.